All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Hollister Planning Commission on October 23rd. The meeting is now called into order and it is 6:00 PM. Staff, please call roll.
Commissioner Damian Perez.
Present.
Commissioner Julio Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Peter Hernandez.
Present.
Chair Steve Belong.
Present.
And just for the record, Vice Chair Carla Torres de Luna is absent tonight.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
Ready to salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 4.1. This is the time for anybody in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter, the jurisdiction of the commission. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to staff before speaking. When the commission secretary calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the commission. If you are joining us by Zoom, please click on the button of your screen to raise your hand. If you are joining us by Zoom using a cellphone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the commission from discussing or taking action on any item on the agenda. Staff, do we have any comment cards? Yep.
Seems we have one speaker, two speakers. Okay, our first speaker is Carlos Rodriguez.
Hi, good afternoon. So I'm here because I built a, an outside outdoor gazebo pergola behind my house. And we're first time home buyers here in town. We moved here three years ago. So when I built it, me and my dad, he was a general contractor. I wasn't aware that we had to pull a permit. So we already put some time and effort into building it. And I went to the building here next door and spoke with the planning and then I made an appointment. I attended the appointment and for some reason they were too busy, they couldn't see me. So they referred me to planning. I spoke with someone with planning and they sent me back to building. So then after I spoke with them, they told me to go to the code enforcement. So I spoke with them and it seems like they haven't really given me, they've just been saying that I need to tear it down, I need to apply for a demo permit. And I was trying to talk to the planning department and say, hey, you know what? We built it up to code spec. So like the foundation of the post, they're cemented in like three foot. All the materials we used would be the same materials as like building a house. The beams we put on there, we bought them from the lumberyard. So I didn't really go into detail on the materials I used, how we built it. They're just saying that I used up over 40% of the rear yard. But I was reading through the lock coverage and it says that if there's a barbecue area, it's actually excluded from the lock coverage. It says the required rear yard area is defined as the area property between the area rear property line and the required rear yard setback line from main building. So I spoke with someone at the planning, I mean actually code enforcement with Matt, and he told me I had to be 10 feet away from the house. So my yard from the house to the back property line is 15 feet wide. So he's saying I have to be 10 feet out from the house and then three feet out from the property line. So that would leave me with only like two feet. So I told him, I was like, I don't think that's the right setback for my yard because my yard is only 15 feet wide. Now, I spoke with somebody that, they're kind of like with the builder and they're saying that I only have to be five feet away from the house. So my pergola is actually six inches away from the house. There's nothing connected to the house, which I explained to them. And today I spoke with somebody with code enforcement, his name was Matt. And he was saying that maybe, you know, most likely what's going to happen is, you know, they want me to tear it down, apply for a demolition permit, which the permit fine I guess is 950, doubled for some reason. And then I got a second notice in the mail, which the fine went up to $500. So I kind of explained to the other person in code. So anyways, my question was, is there anywhere I could schedule or see if I could get a permit since it's already built and, you know, besides tearing the whole thing out? Or, you know, I've been trying to speak with different apartments and it seems like they haven't really given me an answer yet. So my question would be, is there any way I could schedule like a, an inspection? They could come and see what I built and they could say, hey, you know, you built it way too big or you need to fix this or that. Or, I mean, I just don't have, you know, I ask questions but I don't get answers. So, you know, I'm just trying, and I told him it was a sacrifice on building it. You know, labor and materials are expensive nowadays. And if I would have to spend the 950 dollars on the demo permit, redo the whole thing, it just, it wouldn't be in my budget. So I told him, I was like, you know, with the holidays coming and Thanksgiving around the corner, it's kind of tough to spend another expense on something that's built already. So my question was, is there any way I could just see if I could schedule an inspection and they say, hey, you built it up to code specs, the setbacks are right, and just apply for a permit? But they're just not giving me that option. So I'm just here today to see what I could do or, you know, what's, what's the next step?
So unfortunately, the commission can't discuss anything because it's not on our agenda. Staff, is there any direction that you can give them?
Only that it would really depend on the case. So you can reach out to us. I can give you my card. I think I have one in my bag. If you stick around for a few minutes, I'll find a time to grab you one. But yeah, it sounds like it depends on if it was code enforcement or staff or demo and the setbacks and everything, it'll be specific to the case.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think if it's possible, maybe because this whole conversation that's coming up next is going to be about the process, maybe, yeah, maybe there could be an opportunity at the end of the meeting to come up with a remedy or at least consider a remedy and be able to talk to the applicant.
Well, the item before you later on the agenda is a presentation and it doesn't specifically agendize his particular project. So I wouldn't recommend discussing it outside of, because it isn't on the agenda.
No, I understand. My main point is this, that's the whole point of this whole meeting.
His project is largely outside the purview of the planning commission as well.
Yeah, no, but we're definitely overseeing process, right? And there's a process and from what we're hearing, he doesn't understand the process or there's a lot of ambiguity, which actually is consistent with the other meetings, that there's an issue with the process. So to a certain extent, maybe not his specific project, but at least as far as addressing potential issues. I mean, we're not going to understand how to address those as planning commissioners if we don't understand what was the, what was the failure in that engagement.
Sure, he's certainly welcome to listen to the presentation so that he understands the process as well.
Our next speaker is Samantha Anne Ruben Lopez.
Hi, I'm Samantha and this is our second time here. Before the planning commission, we were here in June, I believe, on the same matter. One of our neighbors in the Maribella track where we're from, community, was just having issues with the, with the city, the engineering applying for permits, getting the runaround, getting told one thing and another thing. So a lot of back and forth and we explained that at the last meeting as well. And we're kind of here in the same situation. We don't know what our next steps are. We've done what we're reading up on. We get a citation, we do the administrative hearing. My neighbor who was just here as well, his plan for his fence extension got approved because of all the stuff going on. There was miscommunication and whatnot. So our question last time was, well, what do we do? And they're like, well, his case is different. It got approved. You have to go back and follow your steps and then come before the planning commission. So we didn't know how to do that. We did our administrative hearing. We went to the city to file an encroachment permit after the fact. They told us, you can't do that. You have one permit, you're only allowed one permit. I told my husband, he should have asked like, well, am I not allowed to rescind a permit or take it back? Like I paid for it. If I just chose not to do that again and I wanted to do something else, can I apply? They just told him, no, no, no. So right now we're just like, okay, so what do we do? Our fence is out, we have a citation. We just want to find a remedy. And this goes back again, which we'll talk about later, what the processes are and if they could be a little bit more clear in assisting anyone who does want to come and do things correctly and file permits, get a clear understanding of what the next steps are or get our questions answered instead of getting the runaround. So.
I just wanted to add that we did apply for the encroachment permit at which the engineering department would not even take a look at it. They just said, we're not accepting that. You already have one on file. So we don't even have the opportunity to appeal it because he will not accept the request.
So we're stuck.
So, and our citation's already at a thousand dollars. So it's our third notice already, so.
Yeah.
And we haven't got no answers. They just want us to tear it down and then come and apply for it. And maybe they'll grant it and then build it back out. So it's.
Yeah, and then I'd like a little understanding, which I don't know who I would talk to, so about the PUEs. I know I brought that up and my administrative hearing was the public utilities, if they're not being used, well, isn't there a way to vacate them or to purchase them or to do something? They told me to call the utilities, public utilities department. I called them and they said, well, that's going to be your city. They're the ones that handle the utilities. And I'm like, you're sending me right back to the same place that sent me back to you. So I, I'd like to know more about that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question either for the, do we have code enforcement hearings? I know when I was on code enforcement for the city of Santa Cruz or for the county, they would actually have hearings. Do we have that in the city of Hollister? Where they, is anyone, city attorney or?
My understanding is that there are code enforcement hearings, but I'm not a part of the code enforcement department. So I'm not familiar with their process in depth. But my understanding is that there's hearings.
Okay, I'm just curious if we have something like that. I do know, not to detract, that a lot of things could be resolved at those hearings that aren't necessarily, it's not like purview of the planning commission, correct? It's kind of more, would be a code enforcement issue and they could have a hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think technically every individual has a right to remedy, right? It's, so it's a constitutional right to be able to have, and I would assume that there's an arbitrary arbitration process afforded to the public. So, yeah, I mean, personally, I think that would be a good education, right? I mean, that's what the whole point of the next item is.
Okay, staff, are there any other speaker cards via Zoom or?
We do not have any more speaker cards. Nobody online either.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number five. Can?
My apologies. We do have somebody online.
It's Rod Collins?
Rod Collins is online. Go ahead and unmute. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I wanted to speak on number seven of the agenda. I didn't know if I needed to raise my hand now or later.
No, you'll raise your hand later. There'll be an opportunity on number seven as well. This is for items not on the agenda right now.
That's what I thought, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so if there is no more speaking cards or speakers for non-agenda items, we will move on to item number five, consent items. And that'll be approval for August 28th meeting and approval for September 25th meeting. Do we have any questions from the commission on items on the consent agenda? Or are there any items that the commission would like to pull for further discussion? Hearing none. Staff, do we have any public comments on items from the consent agenda?
We do not have any comments.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
All second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries four zero and we will move on to item number 6.1. Staff, may we have the report?
Can you please pull up the presentation?
Good evening.
Sorry, Rosa, Brendan, can you share the screen on the Zoom as well? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rosa Lopez and I am the Assistant Planner with the City of Hollister. Item 6.1, it is a site and architectural review 2025-4. It is a freestanding monument sign at 494 Trespinos Road, which is the Chase Bank. The project proposes the removal and replacement of a freestanding monument sign located at the Chase Bank, which is in the general commercial zoning district. And the green arrow shows the existing and proposed monument sign. The existing monument sign is located in the landscaped area near the bank. And the proposed monument sign is a double face, 25 square feet, 12 feet tall, and it meets the size requirements of the zoning code. And as you can see, it is smaller than the existing sign. You have, you have several options on this project before you tonight. You can adopt resolution approving SNA 2025-4, subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained in the draft resolution. You can adopt resolution approving SNA 2025-4 with findings or conditions modified by the planning commission. You can deny SNA 2025-4 or you can continue the hearing and direct staff to provide additional information or clarification. Staff recommends you select option one, which is to adopt a resolution approving SNA 2025-4.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission? Hearing none. I will open up the public hearing at 6:19. Staff, do we have a presentation from the applicant on this item?
We do not have a presentation.
Do we have any public comments on this item?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, so I will close the public hearing at 6:19. And is there further discussion from the commission on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 6.1, sign architectural review for the removal and replacement of the freestanding monument sign at 494 Trespinos Road for Chase Bank.
All right, there's a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, four zero, the motion carries.
Thank you. And I'm just going to note for the record that that will be planning commission resolution number 2025-9.
Okay, moving on to item 7.1. Maybe we have a staff report?
We've got a camera on the dais today. Good evening, planning commission. Eva Kelly, I'm your planning manager. Tonight, I'm going to go over the planning processes in the city of Hollister, both staff level and planning commission council level and do some brief background as requested by the planning commission at one of your earlier meetings. So just the overview of my presentation tonight, I'm going to start with some legislative framework, both local and relevant state laws to how planning works in the city of Hollister and then go over our process for entitlement applications. So planning entitlement applications. And then I'll briefly discuss appeals processes, post entitlement processes, and then go over the various types of applications that we have. Ministerial, some preliminary review information, and then our large development applications and entitlements. Beginning with the legislative framework, the big key piece of local legislation that guides all of our policies and goals in the city is our general plan. Every city and jurisdiction, every city, county in the state of California is required to have a general plan. And this is a long range document that is the blueprint for all of your growth and development in your city. And our general plan is currently the 2005 to 2023 general plan, though we are in the process of updating that through the year 2040. And general plan is establishing our community's vision and it has a series of supporting goals, policies, and actions over all of the framework of the city. So general plans are required to have what's called elements, which are essentially chapters, but you can kind of put them together or separate them and order them how you like for your city. But they are required to address certain elements. These are land use and community design, circulation, so our traffic and pedestrian circulation, housing, which I'll talk a little bit more in depth about, natural resources and conservation, and open space and agriculture. So those are our required elements. Oh, and health and safety, which includes noise. But I will note that the city of Hollister's current general plan also includes additional elements. So we also have a community services and facilities element in our current general plan. So that talks about our utilities and our, you know, our, our public services, our wastewater treatment plant, so other community services. So we have an additional chapter in our general plan. And in the 2040 general plan update, the city's also proposing to add a, three new elements. So all of these seven are community services and facilities element, but also we're adding an arts and cultural element, an economic development element, and an environmental justice element into the 2040 general plan update. I did want to talk a little bit more in depth to the planning commission about the housing element as one of the big types of projects that you will see in review are housing development projects. The housing element is a little bit different than the rest of the chapters of your general plan. It is required by state mandate to be updated on a more regular basis. So while our general plan hasn't been updated since 2005 and it's not required to be updated, they're usually updated every 15, 20 years. The housing element is required by state law to be updated every eight years on an eight-year cycle. Our fifth cycle housing element was adopted in 2016 and it covered the 2015 to 2023 fifth cycle. The sixth cycle, which is what we are currently in the process of updating, is for 2023 to 2031. So we are in the middle of that. We do not currently have what's called a certified housing element. So we're working to update that so that we can have a certified housing element in the city of Hollister. The housing element, one thing that you've probably heard of, and if you haven't heard of it, you'll hear it tonight and then you'll probably hear of it again in the future, is what's called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is RENA, R-H-N-A. And this is a designation by the state for the number of housing units and the affordability level of those housing units that every agency in the city of Hollister has to plan for. So the city's been assigned that number by the state. The Department of Housing and Community Development reviews and approves our housing element. And so they, we have to plan for our current six cycle arena, which is 4,163 units. It's important to note that what this means is we have to plan for it. We have to have policies that allow the housing to be built. We don't have to build the housing. The city doesn't build housing and housing gets built by the economy, right? Landowners, developers, they're the ones that are building the housing, but we have to accommodate them to be able to build 4,163 units if the housing units want to be built.
And that's in the city, right?
That's the city of Hollister specific.
That's not the whole county?
Correct, the whole county. So our region is, includes San Bernardino County, the city of Hollister, and the city of San Juan Batista. So we're a small region. And that number is 5,005 units. So the city has 4,163 units of the overall 5,005 housing units for the region.
I just have one question. I know we have time at the end, but so when a municipality adopts a housing element, so whether it be the county, whether it be the city, that's not automatically them approving 4,000 homes? Because I've heard, I've heard that being said, that the board of supervisors approve their housing element. That's not them arbitrarily disapproving 4,000 homes?
That's, that's correct. That's exactly correct. So we adopt the housing element, which means that we adopt, you know, we find enough what's called sites, candidate sites. So vacant or sometimes non-vacant land that could be redeveloped into housing. And we make sure that it has enough zoning, you know, density wise to accommodate housing. And we, the housing element specifically will say, you know, we think that this site, let's say it's an acre site that we have, could be built at, you know, 15 units an acre. So we think that this site could have 15 units on it. And we specifically say, we think that the sites could be built here. But it's also, so it's about land use designation, but it's also about policies. So it's also about facilitating, you know, easier processes, easier zoning ordinances that might be restrictive, talking about policies to potentially look at fees or, you know, reducing fees for affordable housing, those types of things. So it's a combination of both policy and land use designation to combine into a way that you're proving to the state that you could accommodate these 4,163 housing units to be built.
Okay, awesome.
The other local framework that's important is our municipal code. So the city's municipal code, it has 17 chapters, but what's important for the planning commission and the things that you'll see is really our Title 17 zoning and Title 16 subdivisions. But the municipal code is the specific implementation of our general plan policies and it guides how the city operates through all functions, including, you know, our finance department and business license issuances and code enforcement and fire and police and the service of utilities and those types of things. But for the planning commission, our big focus in the planning department is Title 17 zoning, which is implementing the policies, specifically our land use policies mostly and some circulation policies of the general plan into the details for how we regulate land use in the city. And the goals of the zoning ordinance, of the general plan, of everything that we do in planning and building and in the city general, citywide, is to promote and protect the health, safety, convenience, and the welfare of our community, right? As we build, as we correct, you know, unsafe structures through building permits and those types of things. That's the goal in mind. So, and then Title 16 subdivisions is also something the planning commission will see applications through because subdivisions are all of your tentative maps and tentative parcel maps, anything to do with the subdivision of property or the merger of property and create. and creating and eliminating existing parcels. So, Title Sixteen subdivisions largely implements state law, which is the Subdivision Map Act. So we have these two titles in our municipal code that are big guiders for how we do process and how applications are reviewed against. Additionally, and I will talk about most of these further into the presentation as they come up into process, but these are some main state laws that have to do with land use and land use process specifically. So, I'll talk a little bit more in detail about the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Um, I'll talk about some completeness determination processes and decision timelines that come into our application review process from state law mandated timeframes for review. And then I'll talk about the Housing Accountability Act. Again, there's a lot of laws in legislature about housing and how to expedite housing processes in, in the state, and so we implement that through our reviews and our procedures here at planning staff level, commission level, and council level. And then I wanted to talk to you about two specific types of applications that have come through the legislature. So, SB three thirty preliminary applications we'll talk about, and SB thirty-five ministerial applications I'll talk about with the commission. Um, this one doesn't really fit into process, but it, uh, so I start with this law, just a detail on this law, the Housing Accountability Act, which is H A A. It is government code section six five five eight nine point five, and the main thing for the Planning Commission to know and understand is that the state has determined that housing is an emergency in the state, we need to facilitate housing production. And essentially, the Housing Accountability Act says that you cannot deny an affordable housing project unless you make very specific findings, and this is a high standard of proof. If an agency wants to deny a housing project, you have to make these findings and, and prove it um, to why you're denying a housing project. There are about six findings, but the real one that is important to the commission that isn't a very niche situation is that the housing element needs to have a specific adverse impact to public health or safety in order to be denied.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Um, what, what, is there, is there legal definitions to what that findings is? Or is it just, is that the, the actual language in the law?
That's the actual language in the law, um, and it does go on to say that a housing project that doesn't meet your code or doesn't meet your general plan is not a specific adverse impact. So it, it, it is a high standard, um, we would definitely...
Has that been challenged? When would that, did that law pass?
Jennifer, do you recall when it passed? I wanna say twenty eighteen.
Yeah, the Housing Accountability Act's been around for a long time, but this portion is probably at least that old since twenty eighteen. I don't know the exact year.
Not that I would wanna challenge affordable houses, obviously we need them. Um, but it just brings the question for me, cuz I know that technically there was the, the Chevron versus EPA case that actually, like, sets specific requirements for, for legislators to actually apply strict, strict scrutiny to their pro- to their, to their legislation, not allow ambiguity. Cuz technically, if you're violating the general plan, which is supposed to address, you know, health and safety, public, you know, public safety, there's all these things that are necessary, um, that are, or even just adverse impacts, right? Like, you know, two, you know, not enough schools next to it or whatever, and then all of a sudden you have, um, you know, or, or the density of the, the population, there's a lot of houses, I mean, a lot of cars. There could be a lot of adverse impacts, but how do you define what adverse impacts are?
That's the question, yeah. Uh, it's, I don't have a great answer for you, it's a difficult standard to prove on the city that it does have a specific adverse impact to health or safety. Um, I, I will say it's not that you can't enforce your general plan, you can't enforce your zoning code, but there are things, and one of the things that I wanted to talk about was the builder's remedy, which you've probably heard of. Um, there are codes, or, you know, we've talked a little bit about density bonus law, where you can get concessions from certain zone, aspects of zoning or something like that, where, you know, the density bonus, for example, if a project wants to and they meet certain affordability levels, they could build above, they could get a bonus to density, so they could build above the highest level. So, I think that's mostly where it's going with the, it doesn't meet your code or strict application of your code or general plan, um, where some of those things, like, that's not a specific health impact. If someone's qualifying for a density, oh, go ahead, Jennifer.
Sorry, the, the Housing Accountability Act does actually identify what specific adverse impact means, and I just wanted to pull it up and read it to you.
Yeah.
So, it, a specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified written public health or safety standards, policies or conditions that exist on the date the development application is deemed complete. So basically, it's looking for you to tie those specific adverse impacts to a measurable, unavoidable impact that's already established in the city's stan- standards, policies, or conditions, or perhaps state standards, policies, or conditions. So, that might still sound a little ambiguous, but I think it makes it clear that it has to be something that's known, measurable, and unavoidable. So, hopefully that helps and not, doesn't make it more confusing.
So, Jennifer, it sounds like, in other words, the burden of proof would be on the municipality. In other words, we would have to prove that this is adversely affecting, impacting the community in a negative way. Um, I don't wanna get too ahead of ourselves, but I'll just be very blunt here. I think we all know the traffic situation in this county or in the city is just um, horrible. Uh, could that, in the future, could that constitute a adverse impact? Or could we make the argument?
Well, and it doesn't say, I mean, it said adverse public health and safety impact, so you have to tie it also to public health and safety. And I will say there was a comment about, or a question whether or not this has been litigated, and yes, it has many times. So we could always too look to guidance from case law about, you know, what did the court determine in a particular set of facts? So maybe they, there, maybe there was a case related to traffic that we could look at, or di- different cases that relate to different sorts of circumstances.
And not to belabor the, the, the point here, but um, obviously, you know, we'll have to li- later down the road, but I, I, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here, even class action lawsuits, cuz, cuz this is not an isolated incident where I think, you know, we have sixty percent of the community commuting out. Um, and I know we're not the only municipality who's facing those challenges, um, I'm just...
Yeah, I mean, it, it, there's like, just, and I'll move on from it, but the reason why I mentioned cars, you're seeing, because of the affordability crisis, ultimately, people can't, they, they're, now you're seeing two to three families in one home. At a certain point, I mean, you can't stop people from living together, obviously, but then at a cer- at a certain point, I would imagine there's an increased risk of public health and safety because there's so much of a push for impact, you know, ultimately increasing, um, like, ultimately, yeah, trying to, trying to force housing when we're not addressing our current infrastructure issues, so. But a- as it relates to, to affordable housing, it doesn't matter, cuz I, um, I guess, yeah, it, it probably spa- pass strict scrutiny anyways.
Yeah, I think it's really about, um, like Jennifer mentioned, and as she read from the law, it's about having a specific policy that we have in place, you know, about, um, I'm thinking just in like quantity, quantifiable things or public health-related, you know, you could potentially like a, a G H G emissions, I think you're probably looking at something that's like in a SEQA document where it has an unavoidable impact, it can't be mitigated. I think that would be one of the only ways that you'd be getting into this, but it would be very specific and, and staff and, and our attorneys would obviously work with you on any sort of project that was even going remotely down this road. Uh, yeah, so I wanted to make you aware of that finding for denial of affordable housing projects, but I did also wanna make you aware, builder's remedy, which I'm sure you've heard, you know, floating around the community, this kind of buzzword comes about, but what builder's remedy is, is it's a path to approval of a project for an affordable housing project that meets certain requirements when a city does not have a um, certified housing element, which we do not. Um, the project does need to have at least twenty-four percent of it being affordable to low income, or um, there's a caveat for a hundred percent affordable moderate income project. Um, but they do have to meet those first requirements of affordability um, overall in order to even start down this road. Um, but what this means is that a project might be approved, even if they don't meet many of our local zoning standards or requirements, but we may still be able to apply certain objective, quantifiable standards that are in place. Um, SEQA or environmental, which I'll talk about again, uh, further into the process, but SEQA remains applicable, it's not an automatic exemption from environmental review if a project is builder's remedy application. Um, and I will note that there were some major modifications that came into effect under builder's remedy law on January first of this year. So, um, if you ever hear anyone talking about builder's remedy one point O versus builder's remedy two point O, the, the new law that's been in place since this year is builder's remedy two point O, and it was kind of a cleanup bill. So it really clarified a lot of confusion that happened with the first one about what objective standards can be applied and how to apply them and what, what the review procedures are for builder's remedy projects. So I did wanna go over that, and that comes again from the Housing Accountability Act as well.
Um, I just also wanted, I think I just looked up right now, I think forty percent of California municipalities do not have certified housing elements?
I, I don't know the number, so if you looked it up, but I, I don't know the number.
Okay, I, I just wanted to throw that out there, I know we have people in the audience, you know, uh, you know, when we hear we're not in compliance, it's kind of a scary word, I do know that. Um, a lot of municipalities are struggling to, to be in compliance.
Yeah, it's definitely dwindling down, we're into the last, you know, s- few dozen if any uh, that are not in compliance, but we are working on that, and one of the things about compliance is you are subject to these builder's remedy projects, but you're also potentially subject to pretty significant fines and possibly litigation from the state, and we're pretty much not qualified for a lot of grants funding that's available because we don't have a certified housing element. The state, a lot of the state, uh, grants that are available, um, even outside of planning, but you know, your um, transit, uh, projects, A T P, uh, active transportation planning, that's the grants, a lot of those, sustainable communities grants, those have a certified housing element requirement, so it's something that the city really wants to do, and we are in the process of doing that, moving that along. Okay, so that's my kind of summary of legislation and local laws, um, that are kinda guiding the, the reviews and the frameworks that we're reviewing projects against. Um, so the next part of my presentation, I wanna talk about our local review process. Um, we do have flow charts and all of our flow charts that are available. We have some flow charts for our major projects, our SEQA appeals, minor projects, ADUs, accessory dwelling units specifically, but this is what they look like. This is our development application process flow chart that's available online, and I attached everything else as an attachment, so it's right easy to pull up in your agenda packet as well. But we're gonna walk through this in my next slide. So we start with a project submittal, and then we assign a planner out to that project, and then we get into what's called the completeness determination. I mentioned this in the state laws, but the completeness process comes from state law, and what happens is upon submittal of a development application for an entitlement to the Planning Division, the city has thirty days to review the application for completeness. And what completeness means is that they have every item required on their plan set and in their application, so we know a title report and those types of things that are required, um, submittal items from our available submittal checklist that's online. So this includes every single detail that's needed in a planning application plan set dependent on your project, so it includes, you know, your accessory parcel number needs to be on a title page, you need to have um, a, a north arrow, you need to have existing floor plans, proposed floor plans. All those things are detailed in our submittal checklist, and the city has thirty days maximum to review this and provide an exhaustive list of anything that's missing. Um, and if we don't include an item, we can't then ask for it later. So we have to go through very detailed in those thirty days to make sure that we have enough information in the application in order to process the application and review it against our codes. So, if anything is missing, we write up what's called the notice of incomplete application, and we send that back. Then the applicant, when they resubmit to us, we go through that same thirty-day thorough review process to make sure that they've provided those missing items. Um, if, when it's complete, when they don't have any missing items, then it's deemed complete for processing, and that's like an official term. Um, and it goes into design review, so we have all the information that's necessary to review your application properly against our codes and our local requirements. I will say that we do route our projects to our development review committee, which I'll talk about on the next slide, and try to persa- provide design comments about the project as well as completeness comments to try to, you know, we don't wanna say, oh, you're missing all these things, provide us that information, and then, you know, we say, okay, you gave us everything you need, and then in the design review portion, then we come back and give them kind of, this doesn't work at all, you know, redesign it. That's the official process, but we do try to get, you know, those comments about, hey, you, you're not meeting your parking requirement, you're gonna need more parking, into those initial completeness letters as well, so we separate completeness from comments. But we do try to provide a, as comprehensive of a in, of a comment letter on applications as we can during completeness process. So once a project is officially complete, two different things happen simultaneously. The first is environmental review, subject to SEQA. So this is our SEQA um, process flow chart, again, that we have online. But what happens is that the project is either determined to be exempt, so there's a series of about thirty-five categorical exemptions that are outlined in SEQA law. A big one is infill development, so if it's less than five acres and surrounded by urban areas, it can probably be deemed exempt, and then your environmental review is done. Um, if however, there is a potential for an environmental impact, it goes into preparing an environmental document pursuant to SEQA. There are two different types, there are negative declarations, which can also be mitigated negative declarations, and then there are environmental impact reports, or E I Rs. Um, if, after you do an initial study of the project and determine that, you know, there could have been an impact, but we're able to mitigate it with a mitigation measure. So, for example, um, a common mitigation measure that we have is there could be an impact to unknown cultural resources when they start digging in the ground. So the mitigation is that they'll monitor their digging and make sure that if something is found, we call, you know, a, a cultural resources person or a tribal resources person. Therefore, it's mitigated, it, it's not gonna be an impact to cultural resources. Then we adopt what's called a mitigated negative declaration, um, and we determine that with the mitigation in the document, it's not going to have a significant impact on the environment. Otherwise, if you're reviewing and it's determined that the project potentially is gonna have a significant impact on the environment, so let's say, uh, greenhouse gas emissions, it's producing a lot of vehicle trips, and we had to do a, um, an analysis of greenhouse gas emissions, and it was determined to be over the threshold, and even with mitigation, it's still gonna have a potentially significant impact. We prepare a more comprehensive environmental document called an E I R, and then that is what the environmental review consists of. It says, you know, if we approve this project, it could have an environmental impact, but we make certain findings that we'd like to approve the project anyway. It's important to note, SEQA environmental review is informational. Um, if a project has a significant impact, that doesn't mean you can't approve the project. It's a notification document to the public, it says, hey, there's a project proposed, and we took a look at its potential impacts to the environment, and we made these determinations, and we tried to mitigate them to the best of our ability or completely. And it's p- it's informational, it says, this project, we've, we've been thoughtful in our review. It does not mean that you can't approve a project if it meets the city's requirements and the city wants to approve a project, even if it has a potential impact. So, simultaneously with environmental review, a lot of our projects are gonna be deemed exempt, but sometimes they have to go through a preparation of a document. We also are doing design review on that project plan set. So we have determined that we have all the information that we need in order to properly review this project. So we route the project to our development review committee, which we call our D R C. This is an generally internal reviewing body, but it does um, include some of our partner agencies, particularly where they're relevant to the review of the project. But this is our planning team, our building team, engineering, police, fire, our airport, if it's near our airport, public works department. Our airport, if it's near our airport, public works department, our parks and recreation department, if it involves a park or dedication of a park. Um, recology, our, um, trash collection provider. So we route the plans, project application to our DRC. So that the members of the DRC can provide us their specific comments, you know, planning, we're looking at our zoning and compliance. But our fire department is looking at the fire code, our building department is looking at the building code. Our engineering department is looking at street networks and improvements to frontage, you know, sidewalks and utility lines. Our public works department is looking at improvements to, um, you know, sewer or parks and recreation. Like I said, looking at any proposed park designs, those types of things. So all of the development review committee from across the city. Provides planning, their comments. We're kind of the, planning is kind of the consolidator of comments. The facilitator of getting an entitlement approved. But as you'll see, as you see more projects come before you. Most of the conditions and things that are coming onto these projects are coming from. Engineering requirements, building code requirements, fire code requirements. So we kind of compile them for. Entitlement approval.
Would, would this also be like the health department too for like?
Yeah, yeah. We have, you know, San Manito County Environmental Health is involved in a lot of our projects, especially. Um, use permits around like restaurants and those types of things. Um.
So the county is also somewhat.
Yeah.
Or a certain county, um.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now my question to you is, are all these, um, different agencies? Are they all in one centralized location or are they all spread out throughout the county?
Without different departments.
Yeah, they're all, they're all our different departments. So we route, we route electronically our plans to everyone and we typically give, so. Like I said, we, we include the DRC in that thirty day completeness review and trying to get these important comments back to the applicant. Alongside any missing information. So in those thirty days, the first day or two is gathering and putting everything together. Putting our file together. We route to the DRC and we typically give a two week review period. So that if they need a little bit longer, there's a little bit of flexibility. Before the planning division needs to compile all those comments back together and make sure we meet that thirty day deadline. Because that thirty day deadline, if we miss it, the project is automatically deemed complete. We can't ask them for any more information.
And you said this is electronically, so I'm assuming when it wasn't electronic, it was all by mail, correct?
Um.
In the past?
Yeah, in the past, uh, they used to prepare like fifteen sets of plans and applications. And they would go deliver them to everybody, you know, they'd go drop them off to the fire chief and they go drop them off to the police chief. Cause we're all over the place, right? So, and we'd say, here's your plan set, review it, get us your comments back.
I, I think my, my, the reason why I bring that up is because there, there seems to be, um. A lot of different agencies. I guess it is electronically, but it almost seems like it would be advantageous, like other communities, other countries who have. All their government municipal agencies in one centralized location. And obviously that's just very vision, that's just me speaking out, you know. But in your professional opinion, do you think it does? Convolute the, the planning process when all these agencies are kind of spread out through the county?
I mean, I don't think it does. I mean, I think we're in a electronic world.
Okay.
Um, and when we need to, and I'm trying to work on. Kind of getting us back to a place where we could have a more regular DRC meeting, get together for some of our larger projects. It's in the works. We used to meet, but it was really, um, it was somewhat unproductive. Cause we weren't getting the kind of written feedback that we need. The applicants really need the written feedback to come back so they can review it and address it and respond. Um, but we're all working on that, but getting everybody into a room or, or having everyone together doesn't really help. Cause they, they really need to review it with their kind of specific expertise in mind, right? You know.
Have applicants, um. Had grievances with, with it, like in other words, maybe they show up to the, um, engineering department. And it's the wrong department. They, they gotta go to different department across town. Like, like have, have you had situations like that?
I mean, yes, but I will say that this is specifically the planning divisions process, right? So I, I think it's important and you know, we have people in the audience here too, for the public and for the commission. The, the planning division is really your kind of first step and I want to do a project or I want to have a new use or something like that in the city. And we, as a department, as a division, planning what we do is we really are that kind of. Consolidation of everybody's comments. And then what happens, and we'll get into it when I get into the post entitlement process. But we don't really issue permits per se. What we issue is entitlements. So in, in entitlement, I think the best way that I think of it is a planning entitlement is permission to get a permit. So we take the bigger picture, the whole thing, you know, we're, let's say we're looking at an apartment project, right? We look at the, the circulation plan and the road network and they need, they need sidewalks on the outside. And they need ADA parking spaces in their parking lot and they need to have a certain design this way and they need to dedicate a little bit of a public park. Um, right? And we look at it as a whole concept. And so that what engineering can do when they review it is say, okay, in order to, to build out the sidewalk. You're going to need a permit to, to, you're going to need this permit to build sidewalk. And then you're going to need a grading permit when you start digging the dirt. You're going to need to come to us and get a grading permit. And then building department says, okay, once you've graded and gotten your engineering permit. You come to the building department, you're going to get a building permit for this building and you're going to get a building permit for the pool house that you want next to your pool. And so building is issuing permits and engineering is issuing permits. And then our fire department says. You're going to need a fire sprinkler permit in that building, right? And so then later, when they're ready, they get a permit from the fire department for a fire sprinkler. So we're the first step at the planning department here, at the planning commission, the council, when we approve an entitlement that says, okay. Here's all the things you need to do after, and those are your conditions of approval, right? So we're not issuing permits as planning necessarily. There's a few exceptions, um, minor things. But we're issuing permission to get your concept, for the concept, the plan. And then everybody tells you, how do you, how do you do that after, right?
Um, if you're going to address this question that I have, feel free to just let me know that it's going to be answered later in the presentation. But it seems like the process is well established once it's, it begins, but from prior cases and some of the things we heard tonight. Um, there's a lot of questions before they even begin the process or the application. So my question is, if it's something about a fence. A, um, business application or a big housing application, is it all the same, um, process?
Not necessarily. So for planning, anything, and. It may be a little biased, but I always recommend coming to the planning department first because if it does require planning, we're first. Right? If it does require planning, if it does require the planning commission to consider that project. We're the first step in any of that process. Now, not everything requires planning approval. There are some minor things, you know, um, our engineering department reviews. Moving your fences around, that doesn't have to do with the planning department and it's. It's in our zoning ordinance, but it kind of just says you can build this kind of fence unless you want to build, get an exception, then you need to go to engineering and get a permit. Right? Um, but mostly everything for building permits, you probably need a planning approval first. You know, if you're putting up a sign on your building, you're going to need a planning to make sure the sign meets the ordinance first.
But it seems that they have multiple options, an applicant, go to the, the city planning, they go to another department. So it's not required for them to go to your department first, right? They could. It's recommended, like you said, depending on the project, but it's not like a clear guidance as to like.
Yeah, so we've been working a lot, um, and I've been working as I've been in the planning manager position. On trying to improve our processes and also to kind of get that consolidation between our different divisions. Um, one thing that we recently implemented, I don't remember if it was the beginning of this year or maybe about a year ago now. But we've been trying to work with our finance department who issues business licenses to new businesses. To have a kind of a halt, like, hey. We, so you want to start a new business, go talk to the planning department to make sure it's allowed. So that's now in place. Um, to try and help funnel and facilitate, because before there was a lot of disconnect. I won't say there's not still disconnect across other divisions, but that's one example of things we've been working towards. And so now we have just a free minor application, um, that for new businesses who are either doing. Getting a new business license, changing their address, location. Or if you're doing tenant improvements, if you're doing any construction modifications to your business. We halt at the business license and send you to planning to say, what are you doing and where are you doing it? So that we can see if our zoning code allows it. Um, but also it gives us an opportunity to say. Yes, a restaurant is allowed here in the downtown, that's an allowed use, but are you doing any improvements to the building? Okay, then you have an, a process. You have a site and architectural review or a construction process. And we've also consolidated our, um, community development permit center counter into one, um, counter. So that it doesn't combine engineering, it doesn't combine finances, but amongst the community development department. We have one consolidated counter where we can help you with planning, building, housing and cannabis affairs. So when you're coming to the planning counter, you're also coming to the building counter, you're also coming to the cannabis affairs counter. So they can help you facilitate that as well. And when you come with a zoning application for verifying a new business, for example. They can tell you if you might need a building permit for something that you're proposing. They can also tell you you might need a planning permit for something that you're proposing. So we are trying to consolidate and funnel and, and have that interagency, um, collaboration to try and help people out. But for the commission and for people who are asking you, for the public. I'd say my recommendation would be planning is always a good start, because we can at least tell you, hey, you know, restaurants aren't allowed in. A residential zoning district, you, you're going to want to look elsewhere. Don't buy that property, don't lease that property. Cause what you, what you want to do, our zoning code doesn't allow it. Or it does, here's the first step. Did I answer your question?
Yes, and I imagine it's hard to get everyone to be able to answer all those questions equally. Cause I imagine there's specialization within the teams.
Yeah.
Depends on who's covering that day, you may get it the same answer as somebody else or you think it really depends on individuals? Cause again, that's a lot of different type of projects.
Yeah, I mean, right now we've been training our technicians on mostly planning and building, um, but we have. You know, we are in communication, you know, phone call away, a, a little chat message away for our planners. So our technicians have access. They are primarily building tech, so they know all the building knowledge. And then we've been training them and we have a planner of the day. Um, so my planners are on a rotation. Um, to be the, the direct support of the counter. If they need more help from a planner, more specifics, they can call the planner of the day. And that's the person who can come give them more expertise. So there's, there's a chain and ability to facilitate communication. From the planning and building counter, but it doesn't include all our permits, right? You know, our code enforcement department is a different department, doing code enforcement things with a code enforcement counter. We have an engineering department that's a different department, doing engineering things, engineering permits with a different counter. Finance department, same thing, fire department, same thing. So. In the city, we're working on better facilitation, but some of that unfortunately comes from being in different areas, different buildings, physically apart. Um, different department heads. So you know, there's only so much you can do when you're not the same department. But community development, we're really trying to work on being that home base, being a good place to come. And trying to get that inner department kind of transfer and understanding of the knowledge and understanding of the process, so.
So wha- what is the typical education level or what of, of a planner? Like what, what do they cover as far as their understanding in this process?
I'm not sure I understand.
So is it like? Do they like, is it like their education's on understanding municipal code as it applies to a general plan process? Um, or do they have engineering backgrounds? You know what I mean, like? Cause I, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to visualize a little bit when an applicant comes, what they can expect as far as, as far as how they're going to get guidance into addressing their project.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that the, the key thing is going to be trying to understand what their project is, right? A lot of times people don't necessarily know what their project is. Or we might get, you know, someone who was cited by code enforcement, but they don't yet have their code enforcement citation. So it's difficult for us, you know. What's going on? We weren't out there, we didn't cite you, right? So it's, it's going to be kind of trying to figure out what it is that's going on. Are you trying to do something new? Are you trying to fix something that is already there? Are you trying to do an upgrade? Are you trying to start from scratch? Is it a minor project? So our techs are going to walk, try and walk through and try and understand where you're at. Do you have an existing permit that we're talking about? You know, something that is being revised or you're trying to submit, uh, for a new permit? Are you under construction and then the, you had an inspection and you didn't pass the inspection? So I think there's a lot of nuance to what's going on at the counter that makes it kind of difficult to.
And that's, and I guess that's the point of my question, because I'll give you a simple example. Code enforcement should be pretty obvious, right? They, they're, uh, applying the municipal code process, right? So if, if, if it's a violation, there should be something in the code that's specific to them, right? Cause then when they write their citation, they're putting the code on there that they violated. So that's a little bit more narrow of a scope, but from what it sounds like a planner, it's kind of the, like.
Do the techs have access to that system, to those citations?
No.
Right, it's totally separate.
No, we don't have access to it. They have to send it to us.
And part of my reasoning for mentioning that is because there seems to be kind of this like collision happening between two departments. Cause I've heard in many cases, the code enforcement is citing them for something that the planner said it was okay. Um, you know, I actually, I had one instance that, um, specifically the mayor had mentioned, she forwarded to me. And it was basically a person who had to get an exemption for putting a, a, some kind of a storage unit in, on their property. Because they had to basically, they're renovating their house. And long and short, I think through that process, the code enforcement, because it'd been sitting there for a while. Came inside and said, you don't have the right to do, to put this thing here. And then sure enough, then I'm finding, you know, from what I'm being told. Um, they were actually approved with that. That's why they, they, they were approved because, and I think they had some kind of an exemption because of their, the. The actual location of their property, doesn't have access to be able to store the storage unit. Like on a side yard or I don't know, some, somewhere a little bit more hidden and the neighbors, I guess. And I know that is the other element, which is. It's just, it is the reality. Um, a lot of our, uh, enforcements, as far, as far as nuisance goes, are very ambiguous. And it's not obviously code enforcement's fault per se, but technically they have to respond to any kind of a, of a nuisance, right? So if someone says, hey, that person's living in that storage unit, I know he is, I mean, they technically code enforcement has to go out there and inspect. And I guess in this instance, they did inspect and it's like, no, he's not. This is where I'm keeping my, my tools. And I have no other place to put all these big powered tools to do this renovation. Um, but it doesn't matter because they basically had to, uh, address that issue. And I guess they ended up getting cited for it, even though they were told it was okay. That's why they even had that unit there in the first place.
Yeah, and unfortunately, code enforcement is their whole, their own, their own ballgame and their own department.
So who runs and operates?
The police department.
Code, so Halls Police Department. Who operates, um, the planning department, Greenleaf, correct?
Uh.
Or it's, is it internal?
Development department and I'm the planning manager.
The planning, okay. So as of right now, is there any policy or any, anything in place? Where, say, someone does challenge something or, or it's kind of like in this limbo, right? Where, oh, well, he said, she said, kind of, is there any policy or any kind of daily communication with code enforcement? Or is it like you said, it sounds like there's, there's no policy in place, correct?
I mean, the, there's the municipal code, but yeah, the, we are not, we're not involved in code enforcement citation. All, we, we get a lot of people sent to us to try and get permits for things that it's like. Sometimes they can get a permit, sometimes they can't, sometimes there's a process, sometimes there isn't, and we try to help when people come to us.
So my question, my question is so.
Citation, we are not involved in the citation process, we are not involved in the fee process. We are not involved in the remedy process for, uh, fining or appealing your administrative citation. That is code enforcement's process.
Okay, so if they're in the process of, of fixing something, getting a permit, correct? Like, cause it sounds like we, we've dealt with that before. Just because they're in the process does not mean they're not going to get cited, correct?
Correct. If, if you do something that is not permitted by the code or you do not have a permit for something that could be permitted by the code. You could potentially be subject to code compliance, but, but that's the purview of the code enforcement department. On who they cite, when they cite, if they're getting called out, we're basically, we're pretty reactive to calls. It's not, we're not driving around. But, but planning, building, engineering, we're processing entitlements or permits. Um, but we're not citing you.
Okay.
If you don't have one.
So I guess I've worked in code enforcement, very briefly, but I, I, enough to, to see what works, you know. County Santa Cruz, their whole entire planning department was upstairs. That's kind of why I was getting at earlier, but just. It was upstairs in one room, code enforcement, I was, um, a tech. There were times where during the administrative hearing, if someone wanted to appeal some, a co- a. There were times where during the administrative hearing, if someone wanted to appeal some a co- a code complaint or something like that. We had the code compliance officer, you know, the the main person, and we had planning. So and so would say, oh, well, they're making a a a an effort, a concerted effort to remedy these problems, they're going through the planning process. So then you had the code compliance officer who would say, okay, I'm I'm gonna monitor, then it turns into monitoring the process, right? The code compliance officer was monitoring the process. So it it we didn't have to take it all the way to to start finding people. I understand that that it's two different departments.
I I mean, I guess I could say that they they do monitor and reach out. It's the the amount of code cases that are not being fined, that are in various processes of non corrective. Is far, far outweighs those that are not in any process. But from a like, who gets cited, unfortunately, that's not up to the planning department, it's not up to the community development.
So we, so it sounds like we'd have to have a whole nother meeting with the code enforcement, would you guys be willing to work with them? The the point I'm trying to bring up is is there's the, you have people who are trying to make, you know, an effort to remedy these things, right? Well, you know, code compliance is just gonna say, you need to just, you need to just tear it all down. Well, we've had the same exact issues in San Santa Cruz County where the deck, you know. You had the code compliance officer, you had the building inspector, he's like, you know, I'm gonna go out there, we're not, we're just to see where it is, make these changes. So that that way there was a process, it wasn't just like, tear it all down just because, you know, they're the authority, the. And I get it, they have the policing powers to do that. What what I'm trying to articulate is is there's just, there's a more efficient way to kind of get everybody, you know, in the same room. And I'm not trying to like, you know, our job is to 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 come up with solutions and I've worked.
I I will say that that's not actually the planning commission's job, with all due respect. Your job is to review entitlement applications against the municipal code. But I will say that we do work with the code enforcement department to resolve their cases when they come up. And have to do with a planning permit or a building permit application in the community development department. I'm certain that they work with fire and engineering and other departments to process their permits in the same way.
So would you say it's a checks and balances model where there's a code, they enforce it?
Correct.
And then it's all processed, clarified. So if an applicant is working through something, or are they provided anything that they could show, an officer showing up? Is there anything that they would take as, okay, I'll come back?
Like a permit, like if if they had a permit for something?
That excuses whatever observation they're having that day at the property.
Um so if if someone has a, like, we'll get emails from code, you know, they'll they'll be checking up on. Let's say they give an applicant thirty days to, let's say, get a demo permit or go get a building permit for something to try and get permission. They'll check in and say, hey, I, you know, it's my my deadline to check in with my code case. Do you have a permit, have they come in, have they come by, we have a spreadsheet like where we work collaboratively. But, you know, saying, hey, we talked to this person or they came in, those types of things, so that that is going on. But from a perspective of, you know, the the planning department, the planning process. It retroactively trying to permit something that was done without permits is incredibly much more complicated than permitting something from the ground up.
Are the deadlines at the, a- and I guess I can ask this question quick, is the deadlines that they're giving, say, the code code enforcement? Are they realistic deadlines or you're looking at, like, have you seen something that's like, there's no way we're gonna get this done in thirty days?
I will say that they give deadlines and then the deadlines are extended and extended and extended and extended. That the the code enforcement department is incredibly lenient on deadlines on fines.
They're lenient, okay.
Like the the if people are coming in, if people are trying, if people are talking to them, they're gonna, they're gonna give you extensions, they're gonna work with you.
Um one related question, sort of, for projects that have density bonuses, like they have small backyards, for example. How are the codes enforced? Like, if they only have ten feet of, from your back of the house to the back fence, and you wanna do a project. And then there's an ordinance or something that says, this is a specific setback. Like, how is that enforced, is it just whatever that reads or they're like?
Yes, so.
Consider specific review.
So I, the the code is the code, um is unfortunately the answer. And some of the code sections are not as logical as others, as the commissions aware. We are working on code updates, process updates in our code, um general plan amendments to try and improve some of our regulations that are outdated. But I will also say that many of our subdivisions, especially the ones that you've seen come in in the last ten years. Are under what's called a planned unit development, which we have updated in twenty twenty-three. We updated that process because it was really um being used in like, not a correct way. It was being approved with a conditional use permit, but a lot of our new subdivisions have incredibly tight setbacks. Where they were approved when the entitlement was approved, so when the subdivision map and the the conditional use permit for the plan development was approved initially. At the planning commission level, at the council level, um when those entitlements were issued, they were given exceptions to the standard setbacks. And then developers built at those setbacks. So uh for example, our standard R one low density backyard setback is twenty feet or twenty percent of the lot. A lot of our new subdivisions got exceptions to that through that plan development process, which we've updated. So now it's a full rezoning process, it's more proper. But in the past, it was a conditional use permit, and so they got, you know, instead of five foot side yard setbacks, they have four foot side yard setbacks. Instead of twenty foot backyards, they have fifteen or ten foot backyards. But they don't, and then those houses are built right to those setbacks, so they have small backyards. But they don't have an exception to other sections of the code. It was, you know, smaller lots, trying to facilitate housing development as it was designed. But but they don't have any sort of exception to anything that wasn't outlined in their approval. Um so we have to apply the code equally across everyone, even if they have a different base setback. If their house is built, just as if a a standard single family was built at that twenty foot. And then they needed to build something, you know, they would be subject to the same, they just happen to have a slightly larger backyard in that case, so.
The reason I bring it up is just for consideration, like, we're able to provide flexibility for certain projects for many reasons, right? Because what they're providing, it might be to provide more affordable housing. Um but I'm wondering if if it's a project with an exception on it, knowing that they have less to work with. I'm wondering if there could be extra consideration in considering those setbacks in those properties, right? I know you said a code is what it is, but I'm just wondering, like, you're facilitating being flexible with developers. I'm wondering that with homeowners, that could be an option for them as well, especially if they're in one of those communities. Um again, not an answer, just.
Yeah, so so we would have to update the code to accommodate something like that, right? To where there's flexibility built into the code, then there can be flexibility and built into enforcement, right?
So and and so if you can give a rough estimate, how far behind are we with making the code jive? Um to, you know, because I know you mentioned earlier that technically the way you've done it proper is you did it consistent with the zoning, right? So that way it's already uh set up with the zoning and then at that point, once people apply, then the code was already consistent with that zoning, right?
Uh yes, so so I don't, I don't know that I have a timeline because it's not, there are some sections of our code that are actually outdated. Because state law has changed, but other sections are outdated just in that they just don't work that well. For modern things, it's not that they're wrong, it's not that they don't meet state law, they're just lo- are local policies that need updates. So there's not really an outdated in an outdated sense of the the term, you know, they they are fine and valid, they just don't work that well, so we're trying to update them. Um but from a specifically talking about that plan development process. What we've done is turn it into a real, what most agencies do, which is a rezoning. And essentially, we give that um project, if it's going through that plan development process, its own zoning code. That talks to all of these details and only falls back to the code where it's silent, but we can talk to all of these things. We could talk to accessory structures, structures, we could talk to these things. So that future homeowners, renters, whatever it might be, commercial development in a plan development. Can speak to their specific plan development code, that is our current ordinance, that's one of the things.
Is that what you call the plan development standards, I believe, right? You you have to set up standards to meet?
Yeah, you you set up a plan development, so instead of them, instead of them following our strict code as it's written. With our our zoning that exists now, our standard R one with its, you know, lots, size and setbacks. And and accessory structure design and and front yards and backyards and driveway cuts and those types of things. You can set up a plan development where maybe there's courtyard type style homes and consolidated parking or something like that. Where, you know, it's something we didn't think of when we were designing our specific code. Even when we update our code and update our standards and think it's a lot better, there still might be some creative project that comes through, that the city wants to approve. But it just doesn't meet our code. And so they can get an approval and that's a legislative decision, you know, it'd have to go to the council. But they could get approval essentially to have their own standards, that's a process that's in place now.
I don't have envy you because I know there's a lot of moving parts. Um but it sounds like, you know, and I would imagine that's the goal of this presentation, is to understand how to help. Uh creating more consistency with the process, I mean, to a certain extent, even though we don't have authority over the um over the code enforcement. That doesn't mean we can't make recommendations to try to encourage that uh more continuity, obviously, on that policy level with the.
Absolutely, yeah.
City council.
Yeah, so while the commission doesn't have, you know, direct ability to influence like the process or some of the things that we'll talk about, excuse me. Um like ministerial applications and those types of things where it needs to be approved by staff or it's just a matter of reviewing it against the code. The commission's real like uh power in the legislation is as a quasi agency, so body. You do get to approve things, you do get to review and actually make decisions on projects and see if they meet the codes in some cases. But you also get to make recommendations on codes to the commission or to the council, excuse me. So you can say, hey, council, you know, and a lot of these will come through from staff, if we're recommending a code ordinance change, we'll bring it to you first. Um and you guys get to have feedback and you're the planning, you're the planning kind of quasi legislative experts, right? Um who who are in this state a day, whereas the council's in all of the other things, you're in the zoning ordinance state a day, right? Um and so you you get to make recommendations on on updates to the zoning ordinance, updates to the subdivision ordinance. Um if someone's proposing a rezoning to a plan development with different standards, you get to make a recommendation to the council. Yeah, we think this is a good project, or no, we don't think you should approve this project. That's that's your your power in the standards and policies is to to recommend those policies to the council. So that they can input them into the code, so that then staff and you guys can enforce them on projects.
I appreciate your response and just giving us guidance on what recommendation could be made. Um but I'm just identifying the root cause of all this, right? It's just the tighter setbacks, special projects, and then like we saw in the one development, a lot of citations that were not even the homeowners. Um actions, it was how they received them, so I just feel like it's good to track that whenever something is adjusted or an exception is made. Maybe do what you said, like, right, how would somebody be able to live here and take advantage of their property, right?
So that sounds like even actually even a part of the review process, to make amendments to that review process. To create more clarity on the front end or, you know, whatever recommendations you might have.
Yeah, we're we're really trying to work and, you know, improving every day as we're getting projects in, really trying to be thorough. And I know that it might, you know, it's not always planning complaint, I owe my building permit, my code enforcement, it it we get jumbled and so I I understand that. But when when we're talking about planning and, you know, things taking time or those types of things. As I've discussed already, right, planning is that first step, the setting the stage, the figuring out the process, figuring out how this is gonna come to fruition. Once we decide that we want the project to happen. And so the city's really trying to be thoughtful and detailed, thinking about these things, thinking about the future, thinking about how we can make these things happen. So putting a little bit more effort into that front end, thinking about our conditions, putting that effort in to try and make the process in the future smoother. And then also, these are, you know, planning, what we approve here in planning at the planning commission, planning staff, is the things that get built in our city. It is the new commercial developments, it is the new housing developments, it is new use permits for new businesses, right? These are things that become a part of our community, so we want to be thoughtful, we want to protect the health and the well-being and the convenience and the welfare of our community. That is our charge here at planning, is to think thoughtfully about these projects. So that when they come to fruition, we've had all of these discussions. Going back to design review, um I I would just say that, uh so, planning, we route to our DRC these plans. To try and get those comments from everybody, and then we we serve as kind of the compiler at the point of contact, and we send those comments out. And then applicants, you know, revise their plans, resubmit, respond to the comments. And then once all the comments are done, then we can bring it forward or we can make a decision, right? Sometimes the decision-making body is staff or the director, sometimes it's the planning commission, sometimes it's the council. Um but once we've addressed all the comments, the goal is always a staff to try and have a project that we can recommend approval on. To director or a project we can approve or recommend approval to the commission or the council, right? So we're trying to say, hey, this section doesn't meet the code, make a tweak so that it meets the code. Once they've made that adjustment to the comments, then we can come forward and bring it forward for recommendation of approval.
Quick question, are planners in-house?
Yes. Um so we've got a complete application, we've addressed all the design comments. Now we go to a decision on the entitlement, right, approval or denial. So staff level decisions, we prepare what we call an action notice for most things, which is essentially similar to your resolutions. It's saying this is what's being approved and these are the conditions that you have to follow. You know, you need to get a building permit or you need to get a permit from engineering or you're good to go, make sure you talk to fire, whatever the conditions might be. And then it can be approved by staff. Um I'll talk about the different types of permits that fall into these categories after this. Um then we have planning commission decisions, which are the ones that are important to you guys. Um what we have to do to bring an item forward, we had an item tonight for that sign that you heard, the site and architectural review application. We have to make sure that it's properly public noticed. So anything that has to do with the use of real property, that's kind of how it's outlined in the law. So that means building a new structure, changing land use, changing the zoning designation. Anything that has to do with the use of real property has to be noticed in a newspaper. And it has to be noticed to all of the property owners within three hundred feet of the subject parcel or parcels. So there's a timeline for that, it's a ten day public notice typically, so we have to get things into the newspaper. Um there's some lead time on that, we send out those three hundred foot notices and that's how something can come before you at a public hearing. Um we then prepare a staff report, we prepare a resolution of approval or denial with a recommendation with findings. Based on our expert um opinions from the DRC and we bring that forward to you in our reports to the commission. Um and then we have what we had tonight for the previous item, we have a public hearing where applicant can speak, any member of the public can speak. Um it was noticed to the newspaper, it was noticed to the neighbors, try and get the word out about what the public hearing is about and that there's gonna be a decision. And then if it's a planning commission level decision, the planning commission can approve or deny the project. Um for city council decisions, it's pretty much the same thing, except for because it has to do with a use of land in the city of Hollister, the planning commission. You are their recommendation body, so it's first gonna go through those same steps, but instead of making a decision at the planning commission meeting. You're gonna make a, you're gonna adopt a recommendation and make a recommendation to council. And then staff will do the same thing, we have to notice it again for a public hearing at the city council level. We'll prepare another staff report for the council, it's typically about the same staff report, but we incorporate the planning commission's recommendations. Into those staff reports for the council, then the council will hold a public hearing and then the council will make a decision. And I've noted, just for your information, if uh the decision is about adopting an ordinance, so changing the municipal code. Um then that requires two readings of the council before it's actually adopted. And then in the city of Hollister, most entitlements, like I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, planning is issuing entitlements. So we're issuing permit, permission to get permits, right? So most are of our entitlements have a a two year approval period, there are opportunities for extension. But essentially it says, okay, yes, we wanna see this project happen, we wanna see this land use come to fruition. You have two years to go get your engineering permit and your building permit and build it and all these kinds of things, right? There's lots of steps, you know, approving it at planning doesn't, a building be constructed, make, right, takes time. So most of our entitlements that we approve in planning have a two year approval period.
So really quick on that, so technically speaking, if you're given an entitlement, um that means that they have the right to start the process. But technically speaking, it's all supposed to jive with, um yeah, with with the permitting, right? To make sure that they're, you know, they're they're following the code and everything. And that's where I guess I I I probably didn't understand from the beginning, but technically from my understanding, entitlement is a legal protection that the applicant has, right?
Yeah, absolutely, so what it means is you have an entitlement, let's say it's for two years, again, most of our things are for two years. And that means that. And that means that you have a right to this project as it was designed, even if the city goes and changes the code a little bit later. You get to build this project as it was approved. But if that expired, let's say they didn't build the project in two years or, you know, and then it expired, they could propose a new project, but new codes might apply. So when the planning department or the planning commission or the city council gives a planning entitlement to a project. For a site and architectural review, for the design of a new building or a subdivision. That means that they have two years where even if code changes, law changes, you can't go in and say, oh, you know. We approved this new lot that's fifty feet wide, but then the city decided to change the code and say that the minimum is seventy feet wide, so now you can't have your map anymore. That entitlement's approved, new projects are subject to new codes. So so but there is a process, you know, there's there's the technical engineering review of those improvement plans. There's the uh review of the map and making sure that all the little details that aren't necessarily on the planning plans are all kosher and comply with our engineering standards. That takes time, so you give them time, you give them two years to get all that nitty gritty technical work done. So that they can record their map or that they can build their building, get their building permits.
And that's, I'm assuming, kind of why we, the city and the county ran into some trouble. You know, a few years back when people, oh, they're building all these new homes because those entitlements were given ten, fifteen, thirty, I don't know how many years, but. And that's why it's, maybe it's best to put a shelf life on these entitlements, five years, two years, like you were kinda.
That would be a planning or a council decision, yeah.
Yeah, so two years, some things come from our code, some things come from state law. There are discretionary extension options where, you know, we could say yes or no. There are some things that, um, you know, they automatically extend the entitlement, so the state often will come through and say. Oh, housing developments, anything that was approved between this time and this time, if it was still active between this time and this time, they get a year. They get a year and a half and then, and you know, so this two years, take it with a grain of salt. A lot of times there's automatic extensions, there's extensions after the fact, so you could see projects, you know, having had a really long lifetime. But the city's initial is is pretty much never longer than two years and sometimes it's shorter than two years. Four decision timelines, so again, going from our complete application to a decision. By whichever body it is, if it's staff or the commission or the council, does come, there are some government codes that regulate how long you can you can take. Um, so I just wanted to cover these really briefly, they're a little bit technical, uh, the longer codes. But um, this first section is about how long an agency has from the the decision that you made about SEQA. So when you certify or adopt an environmental document for the project, um, if it's an environmental impact report. If you certify the environmental impact report, then you only have a hundred and eighty days to make a decision for a negative declaration or mitigated negative declaration. It's sixty days, it's also sixty days from a determination of exemption. I will say that for most cases, the commission or staff or the council are going to be making a decision on the environmental document. At the same time as you're making a decision on the project. But it is important to note that there is technically a timeline if you adopt an environmental document. And then, you know, you wanna talk about the project more, make changes to the project, um, there is some timeframes that we need to be kept, keep in mind. And that staff is is thinking about if those things come up. Another thing, just about housing projects, is a government code, section six five nine oh five point five. Um, which was adopted a few years ago, that says that you can, you can't have more than five hearings on a housing project. Before you make a decision, so you just wanna keep that in mind if we're having a study session. Or if it's a housing project that also needs to go to the council, when we give you that option, you know, continue for more information. We wanna be mindful, especially on housing projects, that we're not continuing and continuing, continuing, continuing. We've never had that problem here in my tenure with the city of Hollister, you know.
That's state laws?
State law, yeah.
Five times?
Five hearings on a housing project before you make a decision, yeah, so you, yeah, we we don't run into that, you know, clarification and then we bring it back. And then we 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 try, staff tries our best to answer the questions that the commission might have so that we can make decisions on these projects. But these laws come from other agencies where, you know, they they don't wanna decide, they don't wanna approve it, but they don't wanna deny and it continues and continues. And then the state imposes laws on us all. So now we've had a decision, your project's approved or your project was denied, the city has a fifteen day appeal period. So from a decision that's appealable, um, a decision of staff that's discretionary can be appealed to the planning commission. Decision of the planning commission can be appealed to the council and the council's decision are final. Um, so it's a fifteen calendar day appeal period, so if someone wanted to appeal something, um, that the planning commission decided. They would have fifteen days to file an appeal with the city clerk because, for a city council. And then it would go to the council where the their appeal could be heard. Through the same kind of review process and decision process of we review, you know, the the terms of the appeal. And then we'll prepare a staff report and have a public hearing on the appeal and then the council will either decide to. Uh, uphold the appeal and uphold the decision or or overturn the decision or modify the decision, so.
Is there a timeline once it's appealed?
There isn't one, it's something that we would want to implement in our code updates. But right now, the code doesn't have a timeframe um between, you know, when they apply and when they don't. Uh, staff, from staff's perspective, it's typically like the next month or the month after, depending on noticing timeframes. But we have had cases where applicants who or appellants who appeal say, ah, I don't wanna go yet, I don't wanna go yet, I don't wanna go yet. So we kind of go whenever they wanna go forward with the hearing, um, because we don't have a a timeframe in our code.
So explain that again, says interpretations believed to be in error.
Yes, so this comes from our code, so these are the staff level discretionary decisions that could be appealed to the planning commission. So if if staff made an interpretation of the code, you know, the the staff interprets the code to mean this. And made a decision approving your project, denying your project, and they believe that to be in error, the the code should approve their project. Um, that can be appealed to the planning commission, where the planning commission can make a decision on that interpretation. Um, determinations of incompleteness, so if uh it it's in the law for incompleteness, but it's also in our code. If you are incomplete, so we do a thirty day review, you're incomplete, you resubmit and then you're still incomplete. You can appeal that second notice of incompleteness to the commission and the commission can decide if it's missing the item or not. Um, that doesn't happen very often, but it can happen. Um, and then uh enforcement actions is outlined in our code of staff.
So if a applicant wants to appeal, do they ask for an appeal application from you and then they turn it in somewhere?
Yeah. Yeah, so uh if they were appealing a staff decision to the planning commission, um, they would file the appeal application with the planning department at our permit center counter. Um, pay the fee and then it, we would process it through. Or if they're appealing a planning commission decision, it technically gets filed with the city clerk because it's a council. Um, and then the city clerk goes, we got an appeal and passes it over to us and we process it. I believe the council's adopted fee for an appeal is about three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars. No, three or four, I I can't remember.
For an appeal?
Yeah.
And that includes everything or?
Yes, so that, yes. Yes.
Three grand?
They don't have, the council doesn't have like a tiered appeal or anything like that, they just adopted a flat appeal to the planning commission, appeal to the council. So the post entitlement processes, I'm gonna kind of, these are gonna be very high level reviews because this is kind of. You've done your planning thing, right, and that's planning manager, it's planning department, it's planning commission. We got you a planning entitlement, that's kind of where we pass it off to our colleagues, right? To get them through their technical processes and their permit processes. But planning stays involved on projects that we have entitlements on, because we monitor the conditions of approval. Make sure that, you know, we're meeting all the right steps and everything that everybody put on and the commission put approval steps on. But post entitlement, for anything that has to do with, you know, moving dirt, grading land. Um, building infrastructure like uh new pipes, new water sewer lines, new sidewalks, undergrounding utilities. Anything like that, the first step in your post entitlement process is to go to our engineering department and you're gonna go through civil review. So the civil engineers are gonna be reviewing your improvement plans and or your grading plans for improvements and grading. They're looking at all the technical aspects of your sewer line and your slopes and all these things. That are too technical for the details of our planning phase, but they review all the technical aspects for those improvement plans. And issue approvals on those plan sets. And then for subdivision maps, so the planning commission might approve a tentative map or a tentative parcel map for a subdivision of land. The engineering department reviews the final map. And the final map is what actually gets recorded by the, at the San Bernardino County Recorder. And when you record a final map, that means that's the legal process by which a property gets subdivided. So engineering, your civil review process is for reviewing all of those types of plans and types of documents. After you got planning entitlement approval to do that project. Um, engineering also, just for information, they also assign addresses. So anytime that a project, whether it came from planning commission or it might be something minor, um, like a building permit or anything like that. If we have anything that needs a new address or a readdressing of a, you know, multi tenant building or something like that. Um, engineering approves addressing, they have a little application for that, um, where they assign new addresses in the city. And engineering also issues encroachment permits in the city. So a big project might have a big encroachment permit, but also, you know, our PG&E, anytime anybody's doing work within the public right of way. So that's sidewalk to the road for the most part. Anytime anybody's doing work in the public right of way, you need an encroachment permit from the engineering department. They're gonna make sure that traffic circulation is gonna be okay, they're gonna make sure that the the work that you're doing is, you know. Not gonna mess up our utilities, not gonna mess up our sidewalk, you're gonna put everything back the way that it needs to be, that's our engineering department, that's our civil review process. The other post entitlement process, that's kind of the big one, is your building permits, right? For, and you're gonna need a building permit, anytime a project is proposing new construction of any sort of structure. Modification to a structure that's existing, um, you're gonna need a building permit, right? And so building permit review process in the most high level way. Is that they also have a state mandated completeness review process. So they have some middle checklists of all the different types of applications and what you need to show on your plan sets. So they go through a completeness review process and then they go through a plan check process, so that's kind of the DRC, right? But it's specifically our building permit plan checkers, um, who are reviewing the technical aspects against the building code. Like engineering reviews the technical aspects against the city's standards and specifications. Plan check is reviewing against building code, so they're checking electrical wiring and all of these things, right, on the plans. And then you get your building permit issued. There are also, when you apply for a building permit, you pay a deposit for plan check. Once it's ready to be issued, so the plans are approved, that's when you pay your building permit fee. So you you come pay your fee and you pick up your permit, then you're ready for construction. Construction process, depending on your project, but every construction process is gonna have at least one, more likely a series of inspections. So you're gonna call, you know, you're gonna put up your framing for your house and then you're gonna call the building department, schedule an inspection, they're gonna come out, look at the framing. Then you're gonna put in the in, in the electrical and then you're gonna call the building department, an inspector's gonna come out, they're gonna look at the electrical. So you're gonna go through a series of inspections on your building permit, all the way up until you're ready to be done. And then you're gonna apply for, it's it's not a new permit, you just ask, like, I wanna get final occupancy, I wanna get my final inspection. And final occupancy is, you'll hear a a certificate of occupancy, and so this is granted by the building official. And it it says, this building is ready to be occupied. It's it's ready to be occupied by a person living in it, or it's ready to be occupied by the new business that's going into this commercial space or, you know. But it it it'll have a use on the plans, maybe it's storage, maybe it's a house, maybe it's a restaurant, maybe it's retail. That's in your building permit plan set, and then at your very final inspection, the building official, it'll go through everybody, everybody will sign off on it. You know, all the DRC, everybody who had conditions, airport, planning takes a look and says, yep, they did everything they need to do. Engineering says, yep, they did everything they need to do, building goes, I've done all my inspections. Goes through a a checkoff list of everybody with the last sign off being the building official and they grant that new structure occupancy. I kind of mentioned it, but a building can't get final occupancy until the project, and the project can't be fully completed. Until all of the conditions approval from way back, maybe two years ago. The planning commission gave you a series of conditions of approval that says, you gotta do this and you gotta do this and you gotta do this and you gotta do this. Um, and once all of those are done, which they go through the process, right? Like some of them, some of all those conditions are already done, once you've done your civil review. They were all about putting certain things on your civil plans and making sure you get engineering to sign off on your final map. So that's all done, right, before they got their building permit, but once all the conditions are done, that's how you finish a project, right? And then you get final occupancy and your new building's good to go.
Are the construction inspections held within your department, like all those records?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the inspections are gonna be done by the building division of community development, so my department, not my division technically, but.
Is it within your purview to suggest inspection checklist items? The reason I ask is because we had an incident where there was a fence built into the PUE by the developer and it wasn't caught at the time of occupancy and so forth. So I'm just wondering if you could advise on that, or that's totally separate department?
Uh, yeah, so so fences are not, the building department's not looking at fences. But they weren't, we're being better about it now, but those houses were built different times, right? But a fence doesn't need a permit unless it needs that exception permit from engineering, right? So so fences are a little bit weird in that you can build a fence, you can build a six foot tall fence. Outside of the PUE, outside of the ten foot corner lot setback, you can build a fence, a six foot fence with a two foot lattice, you are within your right to build that fence. You don't need a permit from planning, you don't need a permit from engineering, you don't need a permit from building, you can build that fence. It's when code enforcement goes out and they say, oh, that fence isn't, that's the, right? So it's the exception that needs a permit in the particular case of fences.
That that fence isn't what? It's it's not in the, like, I don't know, I guess if you could finish that sentence, because I'm trying to follow your train of thought. You're saying that technically you don't need a permit, but then code enforcement goes out and it triggers something.
Oh, ye- yes, so there, so the the code about fences is, you know. Um, if you can build a fence, if you're an interior lot, so you got a house on all sides of you, right? You share the, your exact property lines with your neighbors, you can build a fence on your property line. That's six feet tall with an eight foot lattice, you can't go into your front yard, but if it's not in your front yard, you can build that fence. You don't need to come to building, you don't need to come to planning, likely your original developer built that fence for you, but you can build that fence. You can add the two feet lattice on the top of your six foot fence, you're good to go. But, and then on a corner lot, which is where we see a lot of our citations, those corner lots, right, there is a ten foot setback, that's in the code. So developers, they're typically building them at that ten foot setback, a lot of times that ten foot setback also aligns with the public utilities easement. Sometimes developers have a five or six foot public utilities easement and they got the engineering exception to put it in that ten foot setback. Originally, when they built the house, sometimes they didn't. Um, and so what code enforcement might be seeing if they go out and they cite a fence. Is a fence that isn't meeting the the normal standard, so they're seeing something that's closer than ten feet. They're seeing something in a front yard, they're seeing something taller than six feet with a two foot lattice. So they're 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 seeing a fence built outside of the standard. Even though that standard fence doesn't need a permit, something outside of the standard fence needs a permit. If that makes sense.
So it's only when, again, totally separate, they don't have access to your records, they don't know who was granted an exception, exception, so. Again, it's just, they're driving a lot of traffic your way, so I'm just wondering, like, what are some opportunities to mitigate that?
Yeah, yeah, it's a. Yeah, I don't, yeah, yeah, it's one though, you know, we do, we just kind of have to work through it on a case by case basis on the fence thing. Because you don't really, I mean, I don't know that I'd I'd come to you with a code that recommends getting a permit for a fence that meets our requirements. Most places have codes similar to ours, they might have different setbacks, they might have different heights, they might have different requirements. But most cases, most cities, most jurisdictions, when it comes to fences in particular, in your zoning ordinance, they say. This is where and how tall fences are allowed. And they don't make you get a permit for them. Uh, they say, it's it's just the exception, it's the variance, it's the, it's the, the, I I don't. the, I, I don't wanna follow the standard code for my fence. That that's where the permit, permit process comes in for exceptions typically with fences. You're, you're not typically wanting to, to regulate, you know, everybody. Somebody wants to paint their fence white and black and brown and change out the gate and permitting fences would be unnecessarily a burdensome, I think, on homeowners.
So what does resolution look like for, like citations? For somebody who might've been caught in between different messaging from a developer or the previous homeowner? They took action, did something that they weren't supposed to, like, just cause they were built without a permit and that specific fence type required a permit? Cause again, it, it wasn't following the code. Is it automatic denial or do you take the chance to review it?
It's, eh, the engineering department, and I won't fully speak for them, but they're, they're gonna review it, but there's not really flexibility in that code, right? Right? Staff's job is to, to enforce the code, interpret the code, review the code, review things against the code, right? We don't, we're not, we're not the council. We don't have the legislative authority to give exceptions unless the code lets us give an exception. So in the particular case of fences, that code, that table i- is pretty explicitly clear. It says, engineering can give this exception and they can give this exception, which is a um, your front yard fence can be three feet tall, no permit. If you wanna go up to four feet, that's the maximum engineering can approve is four feet. So three and a half, three and a quarter, three and three quarters, four feet in your front yard, engineering can give you permission to go above three. That, that's, that's one of the exceptions. And then the other one is if it's in your ten foot side yard setback, the engineering department can make a determination of whether it meets health and safety and engineering has, outside of the zoning ordinance section, they have their standards and specifications. The safe fences can't be in PUE's. So typically they'll approve an exception. Um, like I said, a lot of our subdivisions got approval at the original building permit stage for an exception in that ten foot to go to like six feet or to go to five feet because that, that fence is still outside the public utility easement. It's just closer than ten. So a lot of our fences already have the exception. But to get a further exception or to do something else is, is engineering's pretty restricted on what they can do. Okay, that, that is pretty much all I have on a process, right? So we, we talked about the legislation, that, that's kinda governing how, what, how, how we make the decisions that we make. Then we talked about the process by which we review those things to implement that legislation against the project. This last section that I have for you is just kind of our most common, most typical, it's pretty much all of our applications that we have, that we process in the planning department. So non-building, non-engineering, non-fire, you know, I kinda talked through their process, but these are planning applications that you can apply for with the planning department. So ministerial applications are staff level approvals that don't have any discretion. You're just talking about, our job is to look at your plan set, look at your application, look at our code, look at our requirements and say, are you meeting it? Yes. Are you meeting it? No. If you're not meeting it, no, we'll write you up a letter that says this is what you're not meeting, what you would need to change to get approval. So ministerial applications are approved by staff and they're reviewed for compliance with objective standards, right? Fences can be six feet tall with a two foot lattice. If your fence is six feet tall with a two foot lattice or less than that, good to go. That's not an application, but that's my example. No applications for fences. Um, and the ministerial applications also improve, uh, include most, all of our post entitlement applications. So civil review, building permit issuance. When engineering is reviewing a final map for approval, they're, they're, they're looking at it against the code and against the approved entitlement, right? The entitlement that planning commission gave might've been discretionary. We took discretion on, on where, where we thought it, it met the code and didn't, and you know, if there's flexibility in the approval process. But when engineering's reviewing the actual permit for that map, the actual permit for those improvements, it, they're just, doesn't mean our standards, doesn't meet what was approved, doesn't meet the conditions, right? So that's that ministerial, there's no discretion. They're not saying, oh, maybe, maybe not, right? Um, building permit issuance, same thing. Is it meeting our building code? Is it meeting the conditions of the approved project? Um, so the planning department, we have accessory dwelling units, so ADUs and junior ADUs. That's a ministerial application through planning to get, uh, an entitlement to build an ADU on your property. Um, I did, I didn't, I'm not gonna go over the ADU process, but we do have an ADU process specific flow chart that was attached and is on our website.
I, I think I brought this up before, um, and I think it was brought up last year too, I think. Have we looked into getting the pre-approved ADUs from the county? If that's like a copy and paste thing we could do, cause I know that, um, the county has offered that, or, or not offered that, but I know that there was discussion of that.
Yeah, so I, I was in communication and tried, uh, asking that, um, to them. It's, it's kind of a matter of plan ownership and copyright that we would have to work through, but, um, we do have one pre-approved ADU that was applied for by a designer that's available on our website now. It, it wasn't a, like the county paid an architect to build, to design plans for them. Uh, architects can also, if they want, apply to have their plans be made available. So we have one of those, but um, I, I definitely have had conversations with the county about how we could potentially set up a system where we apply for each other's programs and do the reviews of each other's plans so that countywide
Yes.
Uh, the plans are available, but at least right now, they are not, um, shareable. Um, but it is something that we're, we have had conversations with the county about.
Okay, awesome.
Um, temporary use permits, so we have minor and major, but you know, if there's a temporary project or event or something like that, um, you know, a temporary, we used to do flower sales, you know, if you were selling flowers. There's some new state laws about that, so we don't see them all the time, but temporary use permits come through the planning department. Um, sign permits, so freestanding signs aside, like the one you saw tonight, any sign attached to a building, a new sign, a change out of a sign, that's gonna need a sign permit from the planning department in addition to a building permit after. Um, we process water efficient landscape applications. So we have an ordinance in the city that requires you to build new landscaping projects. And, and pretty major landscaping replacement projects require you to follow water efficient landscape standards. We process these applications ministerially, we, we review them. Planning also has administrative permit review, which is essentially a staff level, either site and architectural review or a staff level use permit, um, that we can process against our codes and have, um, some staff level ability to approve some minor projects that way. And then I've also put density bonus. Density bonus is a ministerial application, so the approval of a density bonus is ministerial in that there's no discretion. Um, it, you know, if it meets this density bonus laws, it must be approved. But I put an asterisk, uh, uh, because it's not always approved by staff. It, it gets approved by the body that makes the decision. But the dis- the density bonus itself is ministerial. There's not discretion in approving or denying a density bonus. Um, a couple of other ministerial applications I wanted to touch on that are coming from state law, or in the case of the first one, SB nine, we have adopted an ordinance, uh, specific to SB nines, that we are in compliance and have our local standard for that. So SB nine is our municipal code sec- chapter seventeen point two six. This is covering, it's a state law that was implemented a few years ago to cover two different types of developments. What's called two unit residential development and urban lot splits. They, in a very, very brief summary, allows essentially up to four dwelling units on any lot that's owned for single family. And it also inclusive of the four dwelling units, allows that single family lot to be subdivided into two parcels. So you can subdivide a lot and build two and two, or you can build kind of four. And it, it's a combination of ADUs and, and primary units and those sorts of things, but essentially any single family lot can build up to forty dwelling units under this ministerial process, meaning these requirements. SB thirty-five ministerial view is also an important one just for the planning commission to be aware of, but you will never see an SB thirty-five ministerial application because it's ministerial and it must be reviewed by staff. This is a streamlined ministerial approval process for multi-family development. Any, um, development, I believe it's two or more units can apply for this process. It kind of throws on its head that whole completeness process. Ministerial view under SB thirty-five has a specific process that we have to follow. Um, and it is a sixty day decision timeframe. So when an application is submitted, uh, there is a pre-application requirement and some tribal review, but when the application is submitted, sixty days to make a decision. And the project can only be reviewed against, um, certain, uh, objective standards that we have in the city. So if it's, you know, if it, a subjective standard that we couldn't review a project against is if it, you know, fits into the neighborhood, right? But we can review density. We can review, um, you know, this much needs to be window covered fifty percent. We can review a project like this against those objective standards to approve or deny the project, uh, ministerially. And the project has to contain a certain amount of affordable units. That's outlined in more detail in the state law. But it's, it's usually ten or fifty percent at affordability level and it's based on our current housing production under arena obligation, so. It's a little bit complicated, but if the city has met that arena category, then the percentage is less or more.
Mo- multi-family, that's what condos and?
Multi-family is gonna be more than one unit on one lot.
Oh.
So it could be condos, but it could also be a duplex, or it could be a fourplex, or it could be an apartment project. Um, it could be, you know, two different duplexes, or it could even include a subdivision where they're then building duplexes or something like that, so. But any multi-family development, which means that, um, it's
Denser housing, basically, right?
It's not necessarily has to do with density. It generally is denser housing, but it has to do with the form of the housing. So instead of a single family detached house or a town home, cause a town home is gonna be a single family attached house. So it's a, it's a single house on a single property. Even if it shares a property line and a wall with another property, that could still be single family, but multi-family is more than one housing unit on a single parcel.
Can they be detached if there's three?
Yeah, yeah, like you might have a little, you know, courtyardy type project where it's, it's one, one lot, they didn't want it subdivided, but they wanted to build little courtyardy house. That would still be multi-family.
Those, that's what's considered an over the counter permitting process, basically.
Essentially, yeah.
And that's a pretty new law, isn't it?
Relatively new. I would wanna say two, three years maybe.
I think that's the one that I confused with SB nine, but, um, or, but yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's, I guess, supposed to fast track. I get, they get a SEQA exemption, right?
Not SEQA exempt. Uh, I, they, I, I could be wrong on that. I'm not gonna make a statement on SEQA. I think it might be SEQA exempt, might be SEQA exempt. But yes, this is a law where the, the state is really trying to push for policy guidance on housing so that processing of housing can be expedited, if that makes sense. So the state really wants you to implement objective design standards, which is a project that we're working on. Um, you know, that, that the policy, the city council adopts a code that they're comfortable with. And so then you can expedite the processing of and review of applications against those codes because they're easy to decide if it meets it or if it doesn't. It doesn't require a legislative body to say, you know, I, I feel like this does fit in with the neighborhood or it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood, you know, that the state through all of these laws, even ones that I didn't talk about, all the laws over the last eight, ten years that they, they build, you know, they, they hit us with new laws once or twice a year on housing and trying to expedite these processes and, and the real focus of all of them is to get away from subjectivity in the review process and expedition of application procedures for housing development. Um, so anything that is ministerial is staff level. We don't really do preliminary reviews for those processes because they're usually a cheaper application and it's kinda just, just submit to us so we can just get you through the process, right? We'll, we'll give you comments. We'll, we'll, you know, we, you don't need a preliminarily review. We'll just submit and then we'll, we'll work through the process with you. But for larger projects, the city does have two different types of preliminary review. One is our local process. And then the other, just for your information, so the, the planning commission's aware, is a state mandated preliminary application process. That is SB three thirty. And what SB three thirty is, is it's not, it's not really a process. It's just a submit all of seventeen items that are listed in the state law. It says if it, if it gives you a site diagram, if it, if it tells you the affordability levels, if they, you know, if they identify the environmental potential impacts, seventeen items, then the applicant has submitted a preliminary application under SB three thirty. And what this does is it grants vested rights. We kinda talked about vested rights, but I didn't say vested rights. When we give an entitlement, that entitlement applicant is, is vested to the, the approval that we gave them, right? So even if things change after the fact, they can still build their project that we approved. What SB three thirty does is they're vested to all the rules that are in place on the day that they submitted those seventeen items. So even if the review process takes time, even if the city changes our general plan, even if the city updates our code, after that SB three thirty application was put in place, those new things don't apply to this project. Um, and, and then the SB three thirty preliminary application lasts for one hundred and eighty days. So they have one hundred and eighty days from that submittal date to then submit a complete development application to the city. Complete, so it has to go through the incompleteness process and review and all those things. But if they submit in those six months a complete application, then all of the environmental review and everything that happens to design review, we're still looking back at that vested date. That's what SB thirty thirty does.
Can you clarify a little bit? Cause it sounds like the same as an entitlement.
It's not approval, um, but it's, 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 it's again in line with the kind of the state's desire to help facilitate processes and, and provide kind of clarity to development when they're submitting an application on whether or not, you know, they might get approval. And so what it, what it does is it lets a developer know that, hey, I knew, I looked up all the regulations, I read the municipal code, I read the general plan for the day that I submitted this preliminary application. And now I'm gonna design all the details of my project to get through the entitlement and get through the SEQA review and environmental review and all those details that take time. Um, it gives them a little bit more time to kinda lock in those codes that they were up to date on. So if the city is doing a zoning amendment, or the city is doing a general plan policy amendment, or a rezoning or something like that of their property, they can kinda lock in the current pro- policies. Just wanted the planning commission to be aware of the state law.
So the vested rights is more specific to any, any protections, I guess, changes in policy?
Yeah, exactly. It does lock in certain fees, but it doesn't, um, prohibit like automatic kinda annual increases of fees. But it does, if the city was gonna adopt a new fee, um, you know, uh, there's been talks on and off through the years I've been here about like an arts fee. So let's say somebody had a vested right for under SB three thirty right now, and then two months from now, the council wants to implement a art fee, like for public art on new development. This development wouldn't have to pay that new fee, but they do have to pay any fee. You know, we currently have a sewer impact fee. And that increases annually based on its adopted inflator. They still have to pay the sewer impact fee and as it increase, cause that's in place on today.
So it's a timestamp of the requirement that they're
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, so I want the planning commission to be aware of that because you may find from time to time that we have projects that come before you where we're talking about. They have an SB three thirty preliminary right, so if we've made changes, you know, we just talked about code changes and have sent forward some code changes. We can't apply all those. We might not be able to. So if we have these cases, staff is here. Our job is to review these projects in detail and we come to you with a recommendation, just like when you make a recommendation to council. Staff is coming to you with these projects, making a recommendation to you. So, um, but, so we're gonna review these details. That's why we're here. We're experts in our field to present these projects to you, but I think you should be aware of this because it might come up from time to
And SB three thirty's building remedy, correct?
No.
Okay.
No. SB three thirty is just this preliminary application that the state says, if you submit these seventeen things, you get vested rights for one hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I have a specific, uh, well, oh wait, I'll save my questions.
Okay.
She's almost done.
Almost. Um, yeah, so, uh, so that's a state mandated preliminary application. Almost. Um, yeah, so uh, so that's a state-manded preliminary application thing that 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 is that vested rights. It's not really preliminary review, but the city does offer preliminary review of applications to applicants. And what we do is we um will get the application and we'll give it to the DRC like we would with the normal process of a normal project. But the preliminary view, it's a cheaper application um fee, and it gets everybody in a room. But also an opportunity to provide written comment from fire, police, engineering, building, planning. When you're just at that preliminary first concept, where we can give you feedback on any major concerns. And so a lot of times, you know, we're giving feedback on, you know, this does, this isn't meeting our parking requirements, you're gonna need this amount of parking. Or it doesn't meet our density, you you need to adjust, you know, the, this is proposing five housing units and you need seven on this lot in order to meet our code. So we can give that initial kind of fundamental feedback about the project. So that when the applicant comes with their formal application, they can already address those comments. And try and, and then we won't, in theory, have those comments to give. Um, it is important to note, and we note in our written comments that we provide after the meeting, um, that it's, you know, it's preliminary. It's based on the 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 documents that you provide at the time of the preliminary meeting, you know. We'll, we'll take a napkin sketch up to architectural drawings and we'll review what you got, um, and give you as much feedback as we can. And then we'll also talk you through your process, your application process that you're gonna need to go through um with planning. So if you need site and architectural review, you need a tentative map, we're gonna talk you through that at your preliminary meeting to give you that feedback. To try and help you through that formal process when you're ready to submit.
And anything produced during that meeting is not forcible, right? You can reference and say, we told you here, that was unacceptable material.
I mean, it's it's referenceable, but it's not, it's not formal in that it's not comments on an application. It's not subject to that same kind of uh completeness, like thorough, every single detail that we have to provide you. When you submit a formal application, we're, we're trying to give you big feedback. We're trying to give you those fundamental key issues, you know, if engineering sees, hey, this this driveway access point is not gonna work. With how close it is to that intersection, you're gonna need to rethink this design. We're trying to give you that big feedback so that you're not going through the completeness and then getting the big feedback of redesigning your plans. You can kind of redesign your plans, then submit a more complete, more code-ready application to get your formal process through.
But this preliminary application review, there's a fee for it, right?
There is a fee.
It's like fifteen hundred dollars? That's, this is that same process? I mean, yeah, I'll have my comments for the end, but okay.
Um, yeah, and preliminary application review is not mandatory, it's it's something we offer.
That's why it's not on the flow chart, right?
Correct, yeah. It's not mandatory, it's not required, you can submit a formal application and we're gonna take you through the process. And we're gonna give you design feedback, just as we would. It's it's a thing we offer, because a formal application can cost five thousand dollars. You might have three different applications you gotta submit at the same time that all cost five thousand dollars. So instead of getting, you know, into a fifteen thousand dollar application process, um, formal process. You can, you can get everybody into a room with you and you can talk to the city engineer, you can talk to the fire chief. And you can say, hey, am I gonna need sprinklers, am I gonna need to move this driveway around, do I need parking? What's my process? You can ask them all the kind of first initial questions, so that you can draw up your project for when you commit that. That formal application to the city, you have a little bit more comfort in knowing that that you've you've heard that initial feedback. You're in the fault zone, so you're gonna need to do some fault stuff, right? So we'll tell you that stuff initially, so that you you understand if you wanna move forward with your your formal application process. The development entitlement applications that are approved by our planning commission, so this was, these are ministerial applications and preliminary review, which happens at staff level. Um, you're not getting an entitlement from preliminary review, but it's a staff level thing. Um, the applications that come to you as the planning commission are gonna be tentative maps, site and architectural reviews, and conditional use permits. So tentative map is anything that's trying to subdivide property. And the post-entitlement process for that is final maps through engineering that we talked about. So if you wanna subdivide a property, get a tentative map from the planning commission, and then you go to engineering and you record a final map. That's how you subdivide property. Uh, if you want to build a new commercial mixed-use multifamily residential project in the city of Hollister. Or if you want to make major modifications to any existing commercial mixed-use or multifamily residential project in the city of Hollister. The entitlement application that you need is site and architectural review. Some other agencies call it design review, architectural review, here we call it site and architectural review, S and A. That comes before the planning commission, and your post-entitlement process is gonna be getting a building permit for that new construction or those modifications. Um, the other thing that the planning commission will see and has the ability to approve or deny is conditional use permits, CUPs. And the conditional use permit is approval of a proposed land use that requires kind of specific review and consideration. And conditions of approval, conditional use permit, um, prior to beginning operations. So while, one example that I think is a pretty easy one is like a, a retail store. If if it's a commercial area, you're gonna allow a retail store, right? Like that, that makes sense, you don't need to like specifically review every single retail store that comes in. But if you are doing, you know, maybe it's alcohol, it's a liquor store. You know, your police might wanna make special consideration, the planning commission might wanna consider, you know, how close it is to other uses around. Um, you know, maybe there's another liquor store, maybe we don't want two liquor stores right next to each other, right? Um, so that's something where, it's not that you don't wanna allow a liquor store in a commercial area, but you wanna look at it on a case-by-case basis. So you offer a conditional use permit where you might look at it. We also have conditional use permits for our cannabis uses in the city of Hollister, so. Um, those get also reviewed by our council, but cannabis uses, you know, you wanna take special consideration before you just approve that used to go in. Any sort of building or any lot. And so post-entitlement, a little bit dependent upon, you know, if there's other proposed changes, like if they need to make structural changes to the building. But you're definitely gonna need a certificate of occupancy, which is an application, a building permit application to the building department. But you might not be making improvements to the building, um, but it is a building permit for getting occupancy. Um, and it's important to note, a lot of the time, people are applying for one or two of these at the same time, and we process them all together. So you're not gonna have to get your tentative map first, then get your site and architectural review, then get your CUP. You can apply for your tentative map and your site and architectural review and your CUP, we're gonna review it all as one project, pass it to the DRC as one project. Bring it to the planning commission as one project. Um, so it's, it's one review process for every application you submit, even if it's technically multiple approvals. Finally, there's the legislative applications. So these are decisions where the city council gets to make the decision. Because the planning commission is a quasi judicial body. So you do have the ability to make decisions on those tentative maps, site and architectural reviews, conditional use permits. You do get to decide to approve or deny projects, but you are not policymakers in the city of Hollister. So you make recommendations to the council on policy that has to do with land use. Um, but the council gets to approve any project that has to do with making a policy decision, a policy change. Um, so some of the things that are gonna be most of the things that um you would see, and then that would go to the the council. Is plan developments, we kind of talked about those before, that's where you're kind of rezoning and giving a specific code to a specific creative, unique project. That uh might not meet our standards exactly. Zoning ordinance amendments or rezoning, so if we're changing their ordinance, or if a project is proposing, you know, it's currently commercial and they wanna build mixed use. Or it's currently medium density, they wanna build high density. If they're rezoning the land use, that goes to the council. Same thing with pre-zoning and annexation of parcels. So the city council gets to decide what land use ultimately it gets to be, if the annexation should move forward to our LAFCO. General plan amendments, so changes of text or changes of land use in the general plan, that's gonna come through the planning commission to the council. Um, specific plans, which are an aspect of general plans, those are legislative, they become policy documents when they're adopted. They go to the council, and then development agreements or any sort of agreement where reimbursement or financial transactions. The planning commission doesn't make agreements with developers, the city council can make agreements.
So the pre-zoning, really quick, um, that's, that's basically the city council making a recommendation. Not that, obviously not the planning, but the city council making a recommendation to send it to LAFCO or something for a potential annexation?
Yeah, yeah, so, so, super brief on annexation. The city doesn't get to approve annexations, the body is LAFCO, Local Agency Formation Commission. They are a regional body that kind of is outside of the city, outside of the county, outside of San Juan Batista, they get to decide boundaries. Um, but the city can say, we want to annex this application, that requires the council to decide that they want to annex a parcel. Um, but we must pre-zone the parcel, so we must say, hey, LAFCO, we wanna annex this parcel. And if it's annexed, we want it to be general commercial zone. So we study it as a commercial property, and then we, you know, make a recommendation to the council. The council says, yes, we wanna pre-zone it, we wanna give it the land use designation of general commercial if it's ever annexed into the city. And we wanna apply to LAFCO and ask them to annex. So we do the pre-zoning, we give it a a potential land use, so that when it comes into the city, it has a land use. Cuz you can't have a property that doesn't have a land use designation. So pre-zoning and annexation comes through the planning commission to the council and then off to LAFCO for annexation in the future. But that's a legislative decision to to change your land use map, to change your general plan map, to give a parcel a designation of land. I think that's the end. In conclusion, um, we have a lot of local, state, federal laws that are shaping our development process here in the city. Our regulations, anything that has to do with creating a new use or modifying the existing use of land or structures in our city. Should begin with the planning division, so that's the planning staff, um, and the commission and city council. We issue those entitlements, which are like that permission to get a permit in the future from our permitting divisions and our permitting agencies. And then after approval of that entitlement, you have a certain timeframe to get all those necessary post-entitlement approvals and permits. And that's how projects come to be. Um, so, they're just the examples, and I think that's my, end of my presentation. I hope this addresses what the planning commission was hoping to hear from about the planning process, I'm happy to answer as many questions as I can.
Thank you. Um, so I'll start with questions with Commissioner Hernandez and we'll work our way to the right.
Um, well, I, I appreciate, I mean, I, for me, it was more, I I really appreciate Eva, um, the presentation. Honestly, it really did fill the gaps on on certain things in my understanding. Uh, I mean, ultimately, yeah, my questions are gonna be more, or or my my questions that could turn into recommendations. Are more in line with like trying to create a process, or trying to encourage a process, it's a little bit more predictable. And ultimately, um, something that's feasible um for for any applicant, right? Um, because I I do see the gaps, right, and I know you guys, as an example with what mentioned, um, Commissioner Gonzalez. That, yeah, you know, we we wanna have a little bit of continuity, maybe at that point it gets into a recommendation with the city council on code enforcement. Um, so just my my uh, quick thoughts that I'd like to get feedback even from from the rest of the planning commissioners. Um, because I'm I'm taking this as a, uh, trying to create efficiency, even opportunity. I know that part of the general plan, I mentioned it before, is very fixated, and and actually, I definitely had a question about um, the three new uh elements. One of them had to do with economic development, I believe, right? So those are gonna be more, are, have they already come forward, or you guys are still in the discussion phase?
Uh, so the the twenty forty general plan, uh, there there was a draft, there was an adopted document, it's been repealed. But the the direction from the council that the amendments were working on don't largely pertain to changing that aspect. So you could review the draft economic development chapter. Um, a lot, planning focuses a lot on the land use chapter, circulation chapter. But the general plan, unlike the zoning code specifically, covers all city activities. So that's where, you know, economic development gets into policies that the council, in theory, wants to adopt and then implement to help promote economic development. And and all of these other things, they they cross not only planning, but they cross the whole cities.
Yeah, well, and and my point of mention is cuz, I mean, to a certain extent, it's like trying to understand, I think, as the planning commissioners, how to best facilitate that. You know, from a process standpoint, right, cuz we're not policymakers, but uh, um, process on the planning side. You know, uh, for me, I feel like there needs to be a little bit more clarity on the front end. Um, and maybe even like, you know, some of the the applicants that are even here had mentioned, you know, that they're kind of getting this back and forth and no one's giving them a solid answer. To a certain extent, I feel like, and I've actually, just from the prior app, um, one of the uh, the, actually, the other. Um, public hearings we had in the the prior commissioner meeting, where, yeah, that there was, there was basically these costs that being absorbed. Because of these delays, um, and then reapplying and stuff. So anyways, my point is, I feel like there needs to be a a little bit more of um, inform, I don't know, and actually, maybe it should be a question. Do you guys give information on the front end, like kind of your rights as an applicant, you know, when it comes to a project? Or, you know, the review process, you know, the appeal process, um, is there any like information handed, I don't know, something?
Yeah, so, uh, I mean, that's one thing that I've I've been working on, and we've been updating all of our forms in the planning department. I know the building department's been more recently working on trying to update their forms to be more user-friendly and also getting the information that we need. Um, to be able to to facilitate these permits. But all of those uh flow charts that we have that I attached, those are up on our website, and I've I made those about a year ago. Trying to really help provide information to the public on processes in the planning department. Um, and so we have those available, we've been working on updating our applications, or continually kind of updating them. And and making things better for our applicants and for the community. We're working on updating our, all of our planning website pages. We have a really good new page on our ADUs. Um, it has a whole webpage dedicated to ADUs and the process, not only through planning, but also through building for ADUs specifically. Cuz it's kind of a, it's a really conjoined process, and we get a lot of people who wanna build a granting unit in their yard, they wanna convert their garage. So that's a common thing that we see, so we are trying to implement these things, and we've implemented a lot of, um, trying to get the information out on our website. On our forums, we have all of our, all the flow charts are on our counter, so if someone comes in, they've got all the flow charts over here, we've got all our applications on the wall. So stuff is here in 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 our house and in um, in our website.
Okay, awesome. Well, and so, so that's kind of one of my thoughts is the information, like some kind of like maybe an addendum that kind of informs the applicant. On what what they, you know, what the process is, what they can expect. Um, you know, I I really do believe there should be a little bit more of a, you know, quicker process for them to be able to appeal, especially if there's ambiguity. They're not getting clarity from the, from, and I get it, the planners get really busy, maybe that's something that should go to the planner, to the planning commission. Even for the sake, as I'm thinking about it, the more, you know, as a small business owner, the more I'm involved, or at least get to um, have a little bit of a visual. Of what's happening at, you know, inside my shop with staff, and obviously, after I've trained them, making sure that these things are happening. That um, if there's issues, then I'd like to know them on the front end, which basically means they should, technically, the applicant should have an opportunity to come forward and present their case. And say, I'm not getting clarity, maybe there's a um, a better way at that point for us to address it at a process level. So um, so just, just, these are just high-level thoughts, but something that maybe gives um, the appeal process on the front end, a a quicker process. Something that happens within, you know, like a a required to respond, cuz that's one of the issues that I've heard from applicants is, it it takes forever for them to get a response back. Um, and this is again, no, no negative sentiment towards the planning commission, our planning department. It's just, to a certain extent, even having this this discussion, I think, is gonna bring up answers. Is maybe there needs to be like a quicker response time, um, and set an actual expectation as part of the process. You have to respond as the planning department to the applicant within a certain timeframe. If there isn't a response, they should have a right to bring forward their appeal, maybe even quicker. Um, and and something with clear direction, and I mean, per personally, I I know when it comes to the preliminary review. I really do believe, and I understand that, you know, city and county governments are tight on funds. I don't think we should be able to um, charge a fee, and I think they, you you definitely should have a preliminary process, but not charge a fee. If there isn't any note-taking of the actual direction that the applicant's getting. Uh, or a way to reference it from the planning commission side on where the breakdown was and what created the issue, so. So, um, and then one last thought is maybe an organizational flow chart, something that actually highlights the departments, the the interconnected relationships, right? What is the inner, the, you know, what is basically the interdependence? Cuz I know that they're independent bodies technically, but something that kind of highlights like what, where where the process happens and what, who gives? Who has the authority under under, um, during that that process, right? Whether it's the the planner is giving direction, you know, to to the applicant. And if if the, um, you know, the, from there, it goes to this department or whatever, right? So you kind of create a little bit of a continuity as far as what they can expect and who's. So you kind of create a little bit of a continuity as far as what they can expect and who's, who to talk to next. Or who's going to be able to answer that question even, it sounds like sometimes is a concern. And again, I really want to be clear, this is no, no negative sentiment towards the planning department. I really don't know many of the people involved in it. And Ava, I mean, you obviously are very well-versed in your job, so, and I really honestly commend you because you gave a really good presentation. But it's, again, so it's, the hope is to create continuity, clarity, and ultimately, I think, a better expectation. Even cost savings, not just from the applicant side, but even with the city side. Because I think that'll create a more efficient process overall. Sorry if it was long-winded, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Perez?
Same thing, thank you. I would say that, you know, how many applications do you say you process per year?
In the planning department, we're probably getting about 250 planning applications a year.
So again, we're getting the qualitative feedback from a few applicants. But what this does support is the ability to resolve those matters, right? Because you particularly want to be able to resolve everybody's questions. So even though you're processing mostly without any hiccups or anything, the few that are having issues, those are good opportunities to just address their in bottlenecks within your department. So that's just an observation that I'm making. Again, great, overall, 200, that's a lot of volume.
Well, I mean, that's just planning applications. And I would just point out that the, the issues that are coming up are not coming from planning applications, at least tonight, right? So like, the building department's processing thousands of applications a year, engineering department's processing hundreds of applications. So, I mean, it is often planning that gets consolidated as the application that they applied for. But, but we only process the applications I covered. And a lot of applications, a lot of comments are coming from, you know, code enforcement's doing code enforcement things. The city does a lot of things besides just planning. So I think it's important to, like, just understand that when, when we're coming to planning with, with some of these questions, it's like, we do our best to help and try and guide people to the right place because we really do kind of spider web into all of the departments. But to some extent, a lot of times, we're only able to really direct you to the right department because we're not the right department sometimes.
And I put myself in the shoes of a homeowner, right? And I've just navigating the website. And I see you have a section on fences and walls, again. But personally, I would still, I want to go and ask questions just to verify this information. There's like a placeholder here, I just want to point out, like, you might want to close out that comment.
We, it got migrated in an interesting way. So we are working on trying to get our pages back together.
And again, this is like website design. So again, I'm one, two, three, four, five, like six steps in. Again, I work for the State Platform for California Colleges at EDU and navigation and making sure we're able to guide users to the right place. Again, I totally understand the challenges when you have so much content. What you described today is very technical. I'm a homeowner doing this project once in my life, hopefully, or twice. I'm not going to remember if I did advanced extension a year ago, if I did an EDU. So I appreciate the steps you're taking already with addressing the language and the overall codes. But again, those are just opportunities to even have staff that may not be well-versed with all the, may not have the final answer, just navigating the website. Because again, that's just existing resources that you already have. And the flow chart, again, I love flow charts. I create them all the time. They're a really good use resource. And I would even recommend creating more project-specific from beginning to end, all the way to permit. That way, somebody can see the full picture. That would be a really strong resource, if you don't have it already. But you might have a version of it already. Yeah, and there's, there's opportunity for automation. But before any automation is done with certain permits tied for anything like that, or entitlements, process has to be established, right? And I think that's kind of what you're finding where you're dealing with the flow of other teams. Like you're, it's not just, you're responsible for the traffic that you're serving. You're responsible for traffic that's being created elsewhere. So I think that really has to be addressed. I'm not sure what it is. I'll think about it and if I have an idea, I'll let you know. But again, just thank you for providing this presentation. And, yeah, I just feel like you already have existing resources that I think if somebody can help a homeowner navigate, it would be that much closer to hopefully answering some questions. But it's very technical. That's all.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to echo kind of just what they were saying. You know, people have reached out, very complicated process or, you know. And I just also wanted to highlight too, I think it's, I don't know if even, you know, large commercial retailers have seemed to have a problem, and I said, I don't know what's planning, because you said anything with building as well. By any chance, I don't know if this is appropriate to ask, but Spirit Halloween, what was the general kind of just overall holdup with that application? Or something like that, because I don't know if that's appropriate to ask?
No, I mean, it's not on the agenda. And so I wouldn't recommend talking about a particular project if the project applicant isn't in the room, especially if it's not on the agenda.
Okay. But just like, overall, like, you know, I think even some, you know, large retailers have had some, some issues, I think, navigating. And it sounds like, you know, you guys are trying to make a concerted effort to streamline and to get this process, you know, as easy as possible. I guess the only recommendation or thing that I feel like going forward, what I would like to see is the same thing, like something like, kind of like another, you know, kind of like a, maybe, maybe it involves a whole different entity that we just recommend and the city just takes ownership of it. Where it's like, you know, Business 101. I know Morgan Hill has something kind of like that, where it's like a one-stop shop, where they actually have people in the city helping guide this process. Because, you know, I went to school for planning too and it's like, it's still overwhelming. So it could very well be, it's just, we have to just create another entity that specializes in assisting, you know, providing those legal services. So that's all I have. And thank you so much for taking the time and answering all of our questions.
So, thank you again. It seems like there was a lot of work put into this and it was very informative and very educational as well. And so I just want to say I appreciate that. Currently, the city doesn't have like a, for lack of better terms, like a hotline, you know? Because like Commissioner Perez had said earlier, I'm looking at this as a standpoint as a resident, right? And if I'm not in construction or I don't build and, you know, for, you know, just to be more clear on before I start something, I mean, you know, PG&E has 811 before you dig, right? I mean, there should be like, or, I mean, a recommendation, there should be something that residents can just reach out to and then just get the standard process. So I guess it would be call planning and then planning directs you. You know, but then that could get overwhelming for planning, right? Just taking calls constantly. So.
I mean, to that point, I mean, that is our job and that's why we're here. You know, if you call us, we're going to give you an answer. If you email us, we're going to give you an answer. My team is very thorough and, you know, we're, we're not always the first person you've contacted. And, but we always try to give you as much information as we can about our process, about when you, when you reach us at planning, when you reach us at the permit counter, we are going to do what we can. We're going to try and find your old permit. We're going to try and get in contact with code enforcement for you to, you know, if we don't have your code enforcement violation and they haven't given it to you to give us a copy, we're going to try and, we're going to take your information. We're going to try and be that, that mediation point. You know, we're trying to improve our process and trying to improve the information that we have available for planning and for building and for community development. But while we might not be the first person that you get in contact with, when you come to us, we're trying to be, and I think we are successful in being a point of contact. And I think a little bit of that comes from, as planners, we are that spider web. We are the middle cog of the spider web wheel that is all of these different departments who are very technical and siloed in their kind of fire codes. And I'm in my engineering codes and I am the environmental health department. And, and we're in the normal process. We are the person that, that takes that technical, takes this technical, takes this technical, and we consolidate that into a comment letter, right? That's our job, just in entitlement review, in application review. And so we do exercise that in trying to facilitate, you know, you come to us with a code enforcement, and we're going to try and reach out to code enforcement and get, get your violation notice. So we can look at what, what it is that they saw out there, what it is that they're trying to tell you to do. Do you need a building permit? Do you need a planning permit? So while I can't say we are the first person everyone contacts, I will say, we are the first person you should contact. And we're going to do what we can because we, we are that cog and we also are that kind of foundation that kind of sees it all, umbrellas it all into our planned thing that then branches out into the specifics. So we can, we can try to facilitate that as best we can.
And maybe, just a recommendation, maybe that should be broadcasted out to the residents. I don't know if that would be a mailer or on the web, I mean, email blasts or whatever it may be. Just the more the residents know, I think, the better, basically. And then, I know this varies from project to project, but I mean, from start to finish, with application fees and everything, what's the standard that it costs to go through with a project? Just on the fees and applications and?
It's incredibly dependent on the project.
Right, so there's no range? I mean, if it was just an expedited project, build it from the ground up from start to finish, you know?
It would, it would range totally dependent upon what it is the proposal is from the ground up or even a remodel. It just totally depends on where it is, the specifics. You know, you might have certain environmental conditions at one area that the exact same project at a different spot might not have. It is very, very project-specific.
And who's the authority on setting the fees? That would be the council?
The city council.
Okay. And then maybe for a recommendation, because Commissioner Hernandez had brought this up during one of his questions. But, you know, it kind of struck me that, you know, we have a standard fee for these appeals. But this could be, you know, would the fee be the same for somebody that's building a brand-new grocery store versus somebody that's doing something to their home?
As the council has adopted the current fees, yes.
Could it be possible for us to make a recommendation to the council that we base it on a project-by-project basis?
Like a tiered structure?
Yeah, because I mean, for a resident, you know, $3,000 sets people back quite a bit. You know, to a corporate entity, that's just a drop in the bucket, you know? But, you know, there should be some kind of tiered structure based on the size of the project, I feel. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but, you know.
I was thinking the same thing personally.
Well, and it is important to know that the way fees are generally established is also set by state law. So fees are generally charged to cover the cost of staff time. And so the city council could adopt a lower fee, like make an exception to that. But generally, to process an appeal, and Eva could correct me if I'm wrong, but to process an appeal for a big project versus a small project is likely not that much less work for staff.
That's correct, yeah. And, and I would say, I mean, I don't know, and maybe Jennifer knows better on like a recommendation on fees from planning commission just because I don't know where your purview lies in that. But I will say that, though I can't tell you the status of a fee study, supposedly the city is kind of working on a fee study. And that's something that planning is looking at. A lot of agencies will have, it's not necessarily based on size, but they'll have a fee for appeals where if it's the applicant appealing, they pay the full price. And if it is the, if it's someone aggrieved by the project that isn't the applicant. So for example, maybe a project gets approved and a neighbor wants to appeal it who isn't the applicant. A lot of times, the city will either subsidize that application or, and/or they'll charge the applicant the difference. So it's still the full amount because as Jennifer mentioned, the fee covers staff time. But, but the, it doesn't eliminate someone who, who is trying to be a part of the process and exercise their right to appeal a project, even if it isn't their project that they didn't like the decision on. A lot of cities will, will kind of make the applicant pay for the difference and subsidize the fee in some way. So, but, but appeals is a fee that if the city is moving forward in a fee study, I've already prepared a lot of backup documentation over the years to try to implement and update our planning fees. Just has to get implemented to a larger fee study. But that, that is a fee that we would look at.
Perfect. And then, just another recommendation, and I don't know if it's in our purview, but a set time for the appeals, you know? If somebody puts in an appeal, it should be heard within a timely manner. But you said currently there, it's about 60 days, two months, two meetings?
Yeah, so, so currently, it's about two meetings because our newspaper noticing requirements are pretty long. So currently, the newspaper that we have to notice in is the Freelance. It's the only newspaper that meets the requirements. And it only publishes on Friday and you have to publish, you have to submit to the paper a week before the publication date. So for example, this notification tonight went out three weeks ago to the newspaper. So we knew what was on the agenda three weeks ago in order to meet and state mandated publication deadlines. So usually, it's the timing of when that application is filed, whether or not it could make the next commission meeting or not because of notification deadlines. Otherwise, the only reason that it's been extended beyond that most immediate next meeting is at the request of the appellant. So we do send it to the most immediate next meeting. It just might seem like it takes a long time because we have one planning commission meeting a month and a pretty heavy lead time on notification requirements.
I think if we had just had a standard set time limit, whatever it is, and it's documented, and then, you know, obviously documented that, that the appellate has requests, extensions, and how many extensions and time limits on those as well, just for, you know, I guess, documentation purposes. But those are the recommendations. And again, thank you, it was a very detailed report and I appreciate it. Thank you.
One other question, Chair. So, because you mentioned the cost recovery about the fee structure. I still think it's, and I want to make sure that before we end the meeting, that if these are recommendations, that we could actually put it on the agenda to discuss so that we can get feedback from staff for the, you know, the following agenda. But technically speaking, and I understand cost recovery, but ultimately, if you think about the reality, right? And that's, maybe that could be part of the conversation, we can add into it some kind of a report on ultimately the, all the, you know, all the code violations that exist in the county, right? Because if you think about it, if you create a very stiff barrier to entry to a certain extent, to someone who wants to be legitimate in addressing a permitting process, but because of the cost, it becomes such a heavy burden that they'd rather take the chance, at what point in time does it not become even harder to keep up with potential violations? And then liability because of those violations, God forbid, a fire, whatever. And then before you know it, there could have been a lot of prevention from the front end and to a certain extent, lowering the bar and making it easier for the people to address the, bringing forward their grievance, whatever it is, to address some kind of a code violation, permitted structure that should have been, or a non-permitted structure that should have been permitted. So that way, they can rectify the situation and then avoid the cost downstream and even potentially, God forbid, the, the public safety hazards and liability. I think that's just really important to consider and bring that forward as part of the next agenda conversation.
I would also like to add and explore, like, we've had a lot of development, right? And how does the staffing size compare to other cities, similar sizes? Because it just may be an output problem. You don't have enough staff to, because the volume you mentioned, that's a lot. And I don't, I think you are using up your timelines, up to like the days. I haven't heard projects any next early or anything like that, maybe it's not the project type. But I would like to explore how does the city's staffing ratio to the population, you know, how does that compare to other cities? And that might just be another bottleneck and just.
Yeah, and I've heard quite a few things that are really outside of the planning commission's purview. And so I think, and staff can tell me if they like this plan, but I think we can go through the minutes or the video of the meeting and determine which of these recommendations are within the planning commission purview and which are not. And then, you know, potentially bring back those that are and explain to the planning commission why those others are not. And then any items that are outside of your actual purview as a planning commission, you're certainly welcome as citizens to bring those things directly to the plan, or to the city council, either to the city council member that appointed you or at public comment. So just because they're outside of your purview as planning commissioners, doesn't mean that you can't raise those issues directly with the city council as a citizen.
And by raise issues, you mean raise a question?
Yeah, like for example, the size of the staffing in the planning commission, or I'm sorry, in the planning department is outside of the purview of the planning commission. And so, but staffing is within the purview of the city council. And so, but staffing is within the purview of the city council. So it wouldn't be something we would bring back to the planning commission to discuss, but rather the city council could determine whether or not they think that the planning department needs to have more employees. If they don't hear it from you, I don't know where they would hear that from.
Well, I mean, m- my only rebuttal, uh, city attorney is, if we don't understand these things, then even from what I'm hearing with the consensus, is all we're gonna end up doing is putting more burden on Eva and the department without any consideration of what's necessary to actually address that bottleneck. You know, uh, so to a certain extent, at least even informationally understand what is the organizational structure, what is the, the level of staffing? Right? And then at that point, yes, we can, maybe outside of an agendized meeting, but we can, or somehow come up with some informational to present to the council, not for us to direct their policy, but at that point at least inform them of what we're talking about on why these considerations are necessary to address the bottlenecks in our process specifically.
Yeah, I don't, I don't follow that argument. Um, the, your, your purview is outlined within the by, your bylaws. And so if you wanna know exactly what items or issues you are tasked with, you, those are in the bylaws.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I've read the bylaws. I read all of them and, and we can give recommendations, doesn't mean they'll take it. And to a certain extent, if we wanna address something, um, we have to be fully informed in order to address it. And that's what we're asking. We're literally asking, we wanna be informed. If we're not informed, how do we know? Otherwise, fine, we won't talk about that. We'll still get, I personally will still get that information. But then all we're being told basically from what I'm hearing is we're gonna put more burden on Eva and the planning department regardless of our understanding of the city staffing levels and what's necessary to address it.
Yeah, I don't understand the burden on the planning department because the planning commission also doesn't have the authority to direct planning staff. Um, and so you cannot direct staff to do anything, um, other than what's within the bylaws.
Well, we can, we can direct staff on our process, on the process of planning in order to effectuate what we're doing when it comes to planning.
The, the planning process is, is not within your purview. So the.
You're right, but we can give direction to the city council. We can, we can advise the city council, I'm sorry.
Right, as individuals. So I just wanna make sure we're, we're clear on what, I, I just don't want you to have an expectation that there will be things coming back to the planning commission that you've mentioned from the dais tonight that are not within your purview.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. I think I understand. Um, this presentation was informational only. It's not meant to make adjustments per our recommendation. Um, but I'm, again, it's just the way my analytical mind works. I'm trying to get to the source of the issue of all this. And again, this is impacting homeowners and the staff as well. And I'm just trying to find a solution, but I think is through the route that you mentioned, going straight to my city council member. And just kinda saying, we received the presentation and these are our questions that you may wanna ask. So.
You, you're certainly welcome to ask staff questions outside of the meeting as well. So if, if you wanna talk to Eva or any other planning staff, if you have questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer those.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we're, um, my, me personally, I, I'm definitely gonna be direct, um, speaking to my city council member. And informing of this discussion, cause I think none of this matters if we're not able to, uh, dr- basically speak directly to the issue. So whatever the process is, is it fine, but at the end of the day, like, we need to solve this. And it's not gonna happen, based off of what I'm hearing, it's not gonna happen in, 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 you know, we wanna address the process, which the city council has the right to amend that process.
All right, is there any, uh, further questions from the commission? Hearing none. Uh, staff, do we have any public comments on this item?
Hi, yes, uh, we have Ann Hall who would like to speak.
And if anybody would like to make public comments, there's the speaker cards.
They already have your first one.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Uh, my name is Ann Hall with San Bernardino Engineering. I'm a civil engineer here locally. I'm often here before you representing clients on projects. I came to this meeting because the process was being discussed. And I have been here a variety of times with a variety of clients. It's not always a smooth process. I think there's room for improvement. Individual people within the city, like Evo or Brendan, this is not a criticism of them specifically, but there is a level of frustration with the process, I think. And there's some things I'd like to go over that I probably won't get done in two minutes. But, um, a lot of times when people think about applicants, they're thinking in terms of big developers, you know, big two hundred lot subdivisions. A lot of the applicants I represent are not big developers. They're people who are trying to do it one business. Um, so something like having to go get a use from it, and it takes six months to even get through the process of entitlement, as Eva explained, before you can get to the process of building, i- is a financial burden on people. It, on people who don't have big money, you know, it's a, there was a, I have multiple examples. The planning approval, in my opinion, is a conceptual approval. And in some of the documentation that Eva showed tonight, it's described as a conceptual approval. But I can tell you, the things that get asked for are design level pieces of information, and I don't think that's appropriate at the planning level. One thing that got talked about was the pre-application meeting. This is a great idea to have a pre-application meeting, and I was pretty excited when it first came up. But there is a cost to it, and after three different meetings with three different clients, that meeting proved to be not useful, um, unfortunately. Either no information was given, bad information was given. And it was at the beginning of the ti- you know, this process, so maybe it wasn't well worked out. But the result is, I, I don't recommend people to do the pre-application meeting anymore because it's money that just seemed not well spent. You may as well just spend the money to go for the site and architectural and get real comments back. And again, things can vary. I'm just talking about my experience. Again, I have a lot of comments. Um, I know we're limited to three minutes, but one of the things is, conditions of approval for projects are not provided to the client until they're published for the public noticing. There are some things that I think could be worked out with staff ahead of coming to the meeting. Um, if we had the conditions of approval three or four days ahead, which used to be more normal. So I would just like to potentially reach out to you.
Yeah, so if we have consensus, can we give, uh, the speaker another two minutes?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, we used to be able to get the conditions of approval a few days before they were published. And then we could at least say, hey, did you really mean this? Or can we clarify this? Um, the one I came to, what, I think it was June, had, I don't know, five or six conditions repeated. And it had to be something, it was just a typo. It had to, but it had to be discussed here. I had to spend some of my three minutes saying, there's a typo in these conditions, um, to get it changed at the planning commission, which was a waste of everybody's time. Um, that would be helpful. Let's see, just on the checklist that was provided tonight, for example, on the all sheets, it talks about you need to provide a three and a half by two inch tall box for city use. That's fine. But then you go to page seven and it says you have to provide a three by three block for revisions and dates. I mean, small things, but, uh, these are a part of the same application and I have differing direction on what I'm supposed to be putting for something very simple. Photometric plan is a part of this, uh, planning application. Photometrics or the, the requirements to light a site are something the city has every right to ask for. When I go through site and architectural, that's just a condition I have to comply with. If I provide you a site and architectural, which usually means hiring an electrical engineer at a stage where they don't normally have an electrical engineer involved, it's an extra expense to the client. When the approval, once I get approved, my project still has to meet photometrics. I mean, there's no discussion to be had there. So I don't know that it serves a purpose. And just to wrap it up here, um, shoot, one of these. When the plan, when it's required to be so detailed at the planning stage, it reduces the ability of the applicant in the planning commission to make adjustments. If they've already paid me for a fully detailed design, they don't wanna come here and listen to what you have to say. Cause then they're just gonna be paying me again. But again, I know I have a time limit. I'd appreciate maybe the opportunity to talk later with you. Not all these are bad comments, but it's not a smooth process, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are informative.
Yes, our next speaker is Sandra and Ruben Lopez. My understanding is since the previous speaker received five minutes, they will also have five minutes.
That's correct.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, as you guys see. While I was sitting here and I learned a lot through your process, not, it doesn't. Well, it, it did strike me when you said, oh, you can build a fence, but you don't need a permit. So I was just sitting here, like, why did I have to go to the engineering department to get a permit that was with, in guidelines? And I paid for it, so I just didn't understand that. Like, you don't need a permit. They told me I needed a permit, so I went and got a permit. Just being told one thing, you're telling me we're supposed to come to you for things. And I think that's why they're like, oh, well, we can't send everyone to you. And you're right, you're not the only one that gets applications. I've been sent to the engineering department. Then they'll refer me to the planning department, then they'll refer me to a different department. And that's the little runaround we're getting, um, which just is frustrating. Like I told my husband, okay, we try to follow the processes. I'll have to look up and I have to read my paperwork to find, okay, what's next? What do I do? Because I'm not getting that from you guys, so I have to figure it out. So we're trying. We, hey, apply, send an email to the engineering department. Hi, I'd like to do this. How do I go about it? Okay, they don't answer, so I look it up, pull up the application. Okay, let's apply for a permit, which you're saying I didn't even need to begin with, get denied, wait another year, try to apply again, get a runaround. We're, you know, it's, it's just very, very frustrating. And so now our dilemma as homeowners and just trying to extend our fence, um, within the P U E, which was just approved June for my neighbor, he pushed us out, it's in a P U E. Got approved, there was no safety issues, no anything, but for me, because it's pushed out, like you said, that's code. So I get that, I have to deal with code enforcement on that. But my question is, okay, so where do I go? If you can direct me, like speaking to planning now, um, the P U E. So now what do I do? That my, they're saying I have one permit to extend it forward, which I didn't even have to pay for. I could've did that by myself, but I don't wanna do that. My thing is, I wanted to extend it, like I had said, the very first time I reached out to engineering. So what do I do? What can I do? Who do I go to? Like, these are my questions. Who can direct me? Or who can help answer them?
We, we can't answer that question right now.
No, I'm asking the planning department. She asked me, like, where do I go? Is that in engineering? Because then they send me to you or I don't know where to go, so. That's, that's part of the frustration you're getting from like homeowners who are trying to do things right. We're trying to go, if you told me, hey, you can do that here, two thousand dollars, we would've done that. But I got twenty different answers. No, you can't. Well, you can't right now, cause we're getting applications. Oh, but you can do this, but you can't do this. It's just, that's what's very frustrating. We're just trying to do things right. And there's, there's no way to know how.
So can, can we set up an appointment with you that we can go through the flow chart and then start?
What, flow chart though, because no. Okay, yeah, so my neighbor came and, and, and did the appeal. And I'm getting it now with that. Oh, he did the public notice, he did this, that's how he came before the planning commission. Um, with his case, we were told you couldn't do that. You had to go to the planning commission, submit a permit, get denied, then you can appeal it. So we just, we don't know what to do or where to go from here, but in the meantime, we're getting fined every day for our code enforcement. So I don't know. I need somebody to tell me what to do, where to go.
I believe you did, you gave her your contact info?
So contact you. Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any more public comments?
We do not have any more comments.
Okay, is there, uh, further discussion from the commission?
I, I would still like to re- make a recommendation, see if I can get support from the, the commission on bringing forward these recommendations regardless of, of whether it's within our jurisdiction. Cause I'm just asking for informational, I, I'm not asking for us to make a policy decision. It's information. Cause I do want it agendized and I do want it to be in public record. So I don't know if I can get support from any other board member to bring that information forward. Again, this is specific to information, just like today, but not, no, so no, no policy direction. But at least be able to get, I'd like to know that who, what is the organizational structure? What is the flow chart of the staff? Who does what? Um, and the, you know, what do they do?
Uh, I believe the city attorney said that she would draft up the questions that we could get answers to. Or, I mean, you would answer all the questions, but you would let us know if we had purview over, uh, the questions that were asked tonight or recommendations.
That's right. I, um, I'd like to get staff's buy-in to that plan. But I think the best thing to do would be to listen to your comments and list them and then determine which of them are within your purview to come back to a meeting and which are not, but inform you which are not so that you know why they aren't coming back.
Okay, so thank you for that clarity, sir. From what I'm hearing is, we would still get that information, but you would basically give us direction or guidance on, um, what is technically considered our jurisdiction and what isn't.
Right.
Okay, so as long as it's all included, that's what I care about. And then it's, I mean, I still think we should have, you know, some of these questions which are within our jurisdiction, the more detailed information. You know, I'd like to know what our staffing levels are. Maybe it's what, uh, you know, our fellow, my fellow councilman Damian mentioned. That, yeah, we, maybe it's a bottleneck of staff and we don't know that.
I would just say that your team is a limited resource. There's a lot of questions that are very unique, very specific, and that is a challenge in any service. You know, so I think it's worth at least drafting the questions. Any of you come back saying, out of your purview, that's perfectly fine.
No, I think that's it. That's all I have. No questions.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to.
We'll move on to item, uh, number eight point one. Any reports from the commission? I'll start with you, Commissioner Hernandez.
Um, outside of my recommendations, my only re- yeah, just thank you, everybody, for being patient with me. I'm still learning, but I'm obviously passionate. I wanna see some good stuff happen through this commission. We volunteer our time, which, um, you know, by default, that means, I'm, I'm hoping, I would imagine, mo- most of us would want to see some serious results to, for the benefit of our community.
Commissioner Perez?
Um, I don't know if this item is even something we could inquire about, but the Kmart building, like what is, can we get it like the status of? Is that something that we could even inquire about? Like, what is the long-term plan for it? What is the holdup for a new business going in? If that's not available to be public knowledge, then that would be a good answer.
I don't really know, I, I don't know that we could talk about it specifically regardless, cause there's no project, but it, yeah, it.
Probably not, it's very specific.
Yeah, like, and I would just say generally, the city does not bring projects, applicants bring projects. So if that helps to kind of answer the question in a general way, projects come to us and we review.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Um, no, I don't really have anything at this time. I, I think overall, I'm just trying to understand the whole process. And there seems to just be, I think on my own time, I'm probably gonna be asking questions, so.
All right, uh, we'll move on to item eight point two, planning division reports. Staff, do we have any reports?
Hey, I thought I had something that I needed to tell you, but I, I can't recall, so I don't have any reports.
It's been a long night, so, uh, I, I guess I don't have to, um. It's been a long night, so I guess I don't have to get a motion, so this meeting is now adjourned at, I can't even see, nine oh nine PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.